Let me tell you, he says, once he get down on the ground, he can be really happy. He goes, I think he's going to be. He can really get it done. He can really. He can really. He's like, we didn't have to have, you know, we need guys, we need you.
Oh, my God.
You guys are starting.
All right, I'm in the middle of people to join us in slinging the flag. And after that, if you remain standing out of respect for the passing, the moment of silence, for Joe Andrews, Joe was sergeant in the Yavon Police Department for 28 years, as well as an Army and Korean War veteran, he will be sadly missed by his family and friends.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation, on a God, indivisible, liberate, and just as for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have a few public announcements, we're gonna skip those right now, we're gonna go over a little, Matt Barry and Chris Ayala representatives who are here at the Old Air Base, but they're gonna give us an update on what's going on, and the reason we're letting them go first is because they have a meeting scheduled at the base tonight, so they came here beforehand, so we'd like them to get involved. Well.
Great, thank you, thank you again, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, I'm glad to come before you, I think every time we come before you, we seem to have news, things to talk about, and progress at Southfield, at the Old Air Base, pleased to be in front of the Finance Committee, I think this is the first time in front of you, so thank you very much. We're here primarily tonight to talk about the agenda for tonight's meeting with the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, and my comments will be brief, really, because what we want to do is introduce you to the new owners of Southfield. We are going to be speaking with the Board at Southfield tonight about the transfer and ownership, and it is Starwood's intention to sell their interest in Southfield to L-Star, to representatives, the owners and partners of L-Star are here tonight, and I'd like to give you the opportunity to meet them, talk to them, and hopefully later this evening we'll be receiving the Board's approval to consummate the sale. Kyle Corkum and Steve Vining with L-Star are here tonight, we're really happy to have found them, found new partners, and found hopefully who will be the last developers at Southfield, and take the project forward with all the progress that's gone on in the last two years.
Good evening, folks, my name is Kyle Corkum, and I'm one of the two managing partners of L-Star, our partner Steve Vining is here. I appreciate you making the special time for us here, we've got a very important meeting with the SRA Board at seven, hopefully to get the final approval to authorize the sale, in which case, our company, L-Star, will become the new owners of Southfield Wednesday, and we're very, very happy about that. Steve and I created this company back in 2007, we invest in these deals ourselves, we're not a fund, we're just two guys that saw the recession coming and created a company to go buy fantastic assets around the country that were suffering as a result of the great recession, and since 2007, when we started the firm, before the recession started, we've become one of the larger master plan developers in the country, and we've amassed a very nice track record of having turned around properties as big or larger than Southfield, as complex as Southfield, with problems as big or bigger than Southfield, and we're very proud that many of our committees have become some of the best selling in the country and in their metros, and so this is the kind of thing that we do, and we see them through to the end. We build all the roads, we sell the commercial, we sell land for housing, we build the rec, and we build the trails, and we love owning these kinds of properties. And we know it's been enormously frustrating to everyone, but we're, this is a new day for us, and so we are very, very excited to take this over, and we want you to know a couple of things, one, that we want to view you as our partners, and we would love to have a very close relationship with the town of Abington. We're both from Massachusetts, although Steve claims to be from Massachusetts, he's really from Springfield, but you know, it's close enough. I spent most of my career here in the South Shore and the Cape, I grew up in Attleboro, worked most of the towns around here for the last 34 years, loved being here, doing this. I was very, very closely involved with the base, 30 years ago, my bud Ed Lambert was in the Navy Reserves, and we used to go on the base together, when he had to go in, see his commanding officer, and it was always fun going there, and then 20 years ago, when the base was closing, the promise of what it could be was, on one hand, kind of overwhelming, and then exhilarating, and so, so many years later now, to come here and see, it's still poised to be great, but it hasn't achieved that yet, that's what we do, and we're very excited to be here. So Steve and I are available to answer any questions, and we're happy to come back other times with specific agendas or open sessions, if you just want to talk with us, we're happy to meet with subcommittees, we've already begun meeting with some of the open space groups, and we'll be coming into Abington Conservation Commission very soon to start talking about some of the open space things that we would like to do, in concert with Rockland and Waymouth as well, and tie Abington in there, but we just want you to know that our door is open, and we're here every single week, and we really look forward to working with you. So if there are questions that you'd like answered about us, the project, the plans, timing, anything like that, Steve and I are available for as much time as we have to answer your questions.
I'm Kyle, I'm sorry, before I, you know, should introduce some members of my committee and chats, Alex, does he answer?
Yeah.
Maureen Johnson, Eric Metru, Paul Mike Rainey, this is Chad Levitt, if you'd like to introduce committee members, please, sir.
Robert Ray, Grant Sala, Michael Maddy, Victor Walters, Cindy White, and Mary Corning, Secretary.
Great. I think, I mean, I personally have a lot of questions, I certainly welcome you people, and you are absolutely right when you said there was a lot of confusion, we had a lot of confusion, and it seems like the plan that was put in front of us initially has continued to get watered down, I understand you gentlemen, and we have heard around the world, we're a business to make money, but as far as the town goes, it went to a lot of commercial development, and more, less of that, and more investment. I've always had a concern where there's phase one, and we're going into phase two, and yet we haven't really addressed the water and sewer issue, and that would be a concern, not just for me, but for all the people in Abington, you know, we talked about Route 18, and all the development, stuff like that, we do have a concern, and we also respect the fact that individuals will buy it, you know, for purpose, we want to be good partners, I mean, let me just say that to you. But I'd like to know if you do have a plan to water and sew.
Well, it's a very, very complex question, we don't have a final plan yet, there are different groups that would like to work with us, MDWRA, Waymouth, other groups that have ideas, we know that the current plan involves a sewage treatment plan on the property, so our planning assumes that we will be building that, but what we plan to be doing over the next couple of months is aggressively getting answers to those questions, so that we know exactly where the water's gonna come from, where the sewer's gonna come from, because Steve and I are buying this without knowing, for certain, so it's a bit of a leap of faith for us, but we think the best solution we want, we work with all the interested groups together to come up with a solution that we're all happy with, as opposed to, we figure it out in the vacuum before we own the property, it just doesn't seem like the right approach, so, not putting you off, just I think we'll find that answer together, and we'll find you very, very quickly.
Appreciate you guys. You know, Matt is, like you said, making this all available, Matt has always been accommodating today about these.
Sure.
I don't know.
No, that water and sewer is my biggest issue.
Maureen?
Just one, you mentioned you guys have been doing this since '07, is there, are there any properties that we would be familiar with, that you guys are involved?
Well, Maureen, that's a great question, actually, we'd be happy to supply you with a series of videos and links to properties, major properties, that we bought around the country, and that we've transformed, there are a couple really notable ones that we focused on with befores and afters that are pretty dramatic, they'll make Southfield look like, you know, a beautiful neighborhood, so we've been here before, we've already filmed the befores of Southfield, we like doing that, because the afters are so dramatic, and so we can make it easy for you to learn about us and the approach we take, and the things that you're gonna hear us talking about, the importance of trails and open space, creating an authentic New England downtown, creating, you know, real housing that connects to that with trails that connect parks to the open space, something we do across, and I think we do it that way, because that's the way things are here, and it's natural, and so our vision for Southfield is to make it look like an extension of the three towns that surround it, and not make it look like a subdivision, and not have the commercial be like Route 9 and 8, no disrespect, but we've got a chance to create a real New England village there, and we believe we're gonna get the state's approval to get that Parkway, the Phase Two section built, starting this summer, and with that, I think we're gonna have commercial viability there, so priority number one for us is to get that commercial village up and running, but to have it look amazing and authentic, and we think that that will be accretive to everything that happens after that, you know, the need for housing is always gonna be acute, but we've got a place and time right now where I think we can get commercial viability, which is a tricky, tricky thing, we think we've got a window here that we can take advantage of, so we're gonna move that up in the priority list and make that a top priority for us.
Yeah, thank you, I think we'd be interested in that.
Yeah, and so for us, it's a blank canvas, I can tell you that some of the land, right now, the land that we're gonna be acquiring on Wednesday that's in Abington is just set aside as open space, there are trails there that we're working on now, and we're gonna come into Concom and with the other towns, Conservation Commissions, and the Rockland Open Space folks, and the Natural Heritage people, to talk about how to link all these, Thompson Pond, which is gonna be within the land ownership, we have questions about whether that should be accessed or not, with trails, are there access now, but reexamining everything that can be accessed, just because the roads were there, maybe isn't necessarily in the best interests of nature or the people on the property, so we're reexamining that, we also have a meeting on Wednesday with the three towns' police departments, all coming together to work out jurisdictional questions, so that everybody can work together, we're also gonna increase opportunities for the police to be training, all three towns, on the property, and we're bringing some very quick recreation opportunities online, softball, baseball fields, basketball, the T-ball lot, street hockey, a whole series of things like that, they're gonna be made available to all three towns, so the parks and recs are all gonna work it out and get to use those, so we see this as an opportunity to pull everybody together, and make it become everybody's community again, like it was supposed to be, so we're gonna go out of our way to look for those opportunities, so anytime somebody has ideas like that, that you'd like to have us explore, please bring them to us, and we will, you know, gladly follow through on those right away. Every one of these ideas we're talking about are things that were just suggested to us in the last couple of weeks, and they're already in action, the parks are being worked on tomorrow morning, for example, just as a result of a meeting two weeks ago.
One thing, we had talked about it the last minute, I'd like for an opportunity for the Abington, our Boards, Finance Committee and Zoning Boards, and, you know, all the different boards in town, maybe come up and walk the property, at least the Abington's portion, just because we look at all these maps, and we say, oh, that's Abington's portion, but it'd be great to hear what you folks have planned for it, and show us exactly where it is, and maybe in the future.
Well, you know, that's great, Kenneth, because right now, what you're gonna see from us is a blank sheet of paper, where we don't wanna conceive of these things on our own, so our planners, we have planners on staff, that have just been chomping at the bit, and start drawing stuff, and we've said, no, let's all do this together, because this is a really fun thing to be involved in, and it's rare to be able to do it on this scale, so for right now, for Abington, it's open space, but what can we do with that? There was a plan that was created maybe 10 years ago by somebody I don't know, who, and it shows canoe launch on one part of the property, and it's, there's never been more than an inch of water in that spot, so, you know, but maybe there is a place for canoe launch, or maybe that's not a good idea.
And with that golf course that was originally planned, is that still off?
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah. We do have a liquor permit up there, and so maybe we could.
We'll let you come get a couple of golf balls. But we are gonna just basically start sitting down with folks and say, you know, what can we do with this, they're, over at Abington, you've got those two control towers, we don't have the faintest idea what to do with those, but we're open, you know, everything to, from taking them down to turn them into something, and more, anything on that spectrum, but as we start to prepare the property, to open up the trails to connect to the neighborhoods, there are a couple that connect to Abington neighborhoods right now, and we need to know whether it's a good idea to make that connection or not, and then there are some environmentally sensitive areas like Thompson Pond, where we just don't know if we should be encouraging access there or not, so these are discussions we all have to have together, and we wanna do the right thing, and do it in a way that's thoughtful, before we let people come on the property, there are a lot of hazards, there are steep drop-offs, or there are head walls, there are buildings that have been broken in with broken glass and things like that, we need to get all that stuff cleaned up and make it safe, a bigger police presence is really important, so we're letting all three towns know that we're willing to hire op duty policemen, come in, in off hours, and make sure it's safe there, so that when the public does come on, it'll feel like a park light setting to them and not a war zone, so these are, you know, short term objectives that we have, just until we can, you know, start having a bigger plan, one that we can all work on together.
Chad, you have committee members?
Yes.
No set, any questions?
Yeah, so for right now, we don't have any plans, nothing's been suggested to us in terms of tax revenue on the Abington property, but if that's something anybody wants to visit at some point down the road, we're happy to have those conversations with you, all right, just reach out to us, we're happy to.
Can you bring up, like, maybe have a Conservation Commission, Planning Board, the Zoning Board, what other members are available, or even the Finance Committee, we could all go down there and take a look at what Abington's piece, because it looks one way on paper, but it's totally different when you're standing there looking at it.
Yeah, and it's a huge, it's just a huge amount of land, too, so it could just be a park light setting, or it could be something more, it could be a combination of those things, but as far as we're concerned, we look forward to working with you, it should be a fun process.
No questions?
You had mentioned the, kind of, the fire departments, do you do the same with the fire departments?
Yes, so, yes, that's a great question, we haven't yet, and I believe we're starting that this week, there may be opportunities for training on the property, and we'd like to talk to them about that as well, and also the jurisdictional things, we know that the fire department.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, they work very.
Stress. Another community on the different fire departments, some of these departments.
Right. Yes, and so we know that there's land that needs to be set aside for civic uses on the property, that presumably would be beneficial to things like fire and that, these are all things we have to explore together, and we're pretty excited about that, frankly, so it just seems like, right now, almost endless possibilities, but, you know, we'll figure that out together, and we're looking forward to doing that.
Any questions from the audience? I think that is, I'm very excited about moving forward, because it's been a very important, I, speaking for myself, and I'm on the board, who are forward to working with you guys, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, well, we're happy to come back and make sure our meetings, but if you wanna work with us, maybe we can get that joint meeting, that walkthrough set up, we can go out there with the different commissions.
And send us the links to some of your.
Yes, we'll get those to you.
Just off the yacht building a high school, it's gonna be disruptive to our plant deals out there, hearing a gentleman talk about the possibility, you know, recreation of jumping on that verse would be something, I don't know, obviously, what you have in mind, it might help out, I don't know if they're gonna do that.
I can tell you that the things that were, it was kind of astonishing, frankly, there was a combination baseball and soccer field.
Correct.
That were taken offline, and it doesn't take much to put those right back online, there's an area that, next to that, where we started building a dog park, that ties into some trails and sidewalks and a little picnic area.
Oh, wow, that would help us.
No, well, it's a long walk from Abington, but, you know, it's still, you know, there'll probably be more of those, but we've tried to cluster that activity in an area, and so it's right next to where the basketball court was, which it looks like we're gonna be able to bring back as well, and put that in the hands of the rec. Across the street, there's a spot for a little T-ball field, so it'll be about 120 down the left field line, and so we have that, and then street hockey and then basketball are things that should be up and running in a few weeks, so with summer coming, we just thought it was a really important priority to try to get these online, so the kids of the three towns can be out there playing as soon as possible, so I think, is Waymouth Parks gonna coordinate that?
They don't.
Yeah, but all three towns will have use of the facilities, and it's just temporary, but it's something, I don't know, so.
Very good.
All right, thanks, folks.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Chris?
Thank you for having us.
All right. Thank you.
I'll give you a board update tomorrow, when I'll be in those tonight, everybody thank you.
If he doesn't mind, I'd like to go to public announcements.
Yes, the 17th Annual Duck Race, Sunday, May 17, 1:00 PM, location Beaver Brook Playground, ready, set, race, join the fun on the 17th Annual Music Parents Association Duck Race. Certificates are available for $5 each, first price of 300, proceeds go to the music programs in Abington Public Schools, you do not need to be present to win, but please contact Music Parents or Friends of Music on Facebook.
Thank you.
I'm sure everyone is well aware of our exciting Flag Day weekend up at Island Grove on Saturday, June 13, and the 14th, the Historical Society of Old Abington is looking for volunteers, contact Eileen Walls at ECWalls60@gmail.com, there'll be more information about that, but mark your calendars, please, it's gonna be an exciting, fun day with the unveiling of the, of the arch that's been refurbished, so, and there's gonna be campfire candlelight tour of the encampment, and luminaries on the bridge, so it's the weekend of June 13 and 14.
Ken Hart?
Thank you. Dale Powers, who is a Rockland resident and also a friend of Abington, has launched an Adopt a Hydrant program that allows residents and businesses to adopt fire hydrant, the goal is 600 reflective hydrant markers, one on every fire hydrant in Abington, markers are made of fiberglass, said Powers, the Maltese Fire Cross will be at the top of each to identify the fire department, the markers will be maintained by the water department, this program is being run by both Abington Fire Department, Board of Selectmen, and the Water Department, the cost to adopt a hydrant is $20 each, for more information, contact
Thank you, Maureen. Can we put that link on the town's website, too, please?
I believe it is.
Awesome.
It is, thank you.
Good job, chief.
Thank you.
The Abington Public Schools proudly announces the Chester J. Valette Jr., Outstanding Teacher Award recipient, the Chester J. Valette Jr. Outstanding Teacher Award is presented annually to the teacher who by his or her performance has demonstrated a willingness to accept responsibilities and perform deeds well about those anomalies expected, thereby distinguishing the teacher profession through great example, dedication, perseverance, and commitment to helping students. Congratulations to Lauren Fitch, who is the 2015 Chester J. Valette Jr. Outstanding Teacher Award winner, Lauren will be honored at the back to school meeting in August 31, 2015, we probably have a committee, congratulations, Lauren, thank you.
Congratulations.
And my friend Chad.
The Abington Garden Club has announced our annual plan set on May 16, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, they call it Rain or Shine, the butterfly park.
Where is that gonna be again?
The butterfly park.
The butterfly park, thank you.
Located on Central Street.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shines.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is discussion on more articles with the department heads and petitioners, we had already asked on some of the articles on discussion zoning, we have the Declaration Act, we've not had a question on, and Planning Board articles were very lengthy, and we basically wanted to, I read, digest, view of what was actually there, so that we could understand the matter of power, people don't get to tell me, so we had a joint meeting with members of the Finance Committee in Rockland, so we could ask questions, we're not gonna debate any of these articles tonight, this is just sort of the information of our office only, and the town manager, Rick, if I understand this proposal, changes your style of article 19, signed by law, which was proposed by the.
Man, yes.
So, we're gonna represent, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Paul agrees, so that would be Article 19, is all everybody got the topic of?
Does everyone have their handout, the board provided to folks? Are you gonna want them to go over?
As far as I can, we're gonna go over one.
Put it in the next slide.
All right. First one we have is on the signed by law, Bruce, can you give me, why the changes, number one, and what they mean?
Sure. Hi, everyone, I'm Bruce Hughes, I'm Vice Chair of the Planning Board, Article 19, signed by law, the existing by law, there is a, there currently is a signed by law, proposed changes have been made by the ZBA during the public hearing, the Planning Board made some additional changes to further tweak the existing by law, a lot of proposed changes have revolved from issues in the current by law, definitions have been added and clarified, extension periods added, et cetera, et cetera, basically, this is stuff that's come up in various meetings over the course of time, and it's a refinement of the zoning by law, it's, you know, it seemed like a consensus from various boards, it's nothing we came up with, you know, this was some radical idea that we had, this is like an evolution of ideas that come with the boards over the years.
Any questions?
It still allows the same size signs, or is there no limit?
Yeah, just, yeah, just some modifications.
So the standard sign that was allowed, I believe, for a business was 32 square feet, that remains the same, anything else would require for the arams.
Central. Is there any financial changes that are gonna be made?
Now, none of these, you know, we have a note in your, in the summary of the changes, it says, please note that the Board does not anticipate that any of these proposed changes will have any financial impact on town, address FinCom's concerns.
All right, that's, I don't know how to pose this question, but I guess, there are a lot of residents that are concerned about how, and the number of signs that are out there, I, with my time, we wanna be as fair as we can, but there are certain businesses that go over the edge and make it look like a title, you know, with all kinds of signs, is there anything we can put that demonstrates to them, like, we haven't read through this, or what is allowable, what isn't allowable, just in a nutshell, it's not, what fishing sign is, or the sales sign.
Let me go get the copy, I have all this bylaws, the whole printout of bylaws.
What I mean, here's where I'm going with the whole thing, if we have a business, not to come down and fire it, but to notify them that this is, you know, the town is considering that we go over, let them handle it themselves before we have it over.
Ideally, you know, they do read the bylaw, I mean, this is, you know, anybody who comes before the Planning Board, the ZBA, or any other boards, we hope that they read the bylaws before, before they come to the committee, they prepare, you know, a lot of these people bring engineers and consultants and stuff like that, and they get paid money to go over the proposal, you know, for these things, but you know, really, people really do need, I do this for a living, I'm a planner for the Old Colling Planning Council, so I get this, but I mean, really, people need to prepare before they come before these boards, that's what we ask people to do, it's, you know, we have these zoning bylaws for reasons.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking for some simpler way of designing for the average person, I know you have engineers and stuff like that, but this bylaw in and of itself is what, six pages long?
People, you know, we have to have, you know, I mean, you can't simplify them into a one-page report.
Well, I think the standard sign, like I said, is 32 square feet, I believe, and that requires a permit, anything, any other sign, other than that, a sign on the side of a building, or anything, requires zoning relief.
Yeah, and I am a total believer in that, it's just like some of them are putting signs up all over the passes and stuff, and.
Right.
A gentleman who, who's a workhorse, who's required, who does different buildings and stuff like that, and someone very stringent, and he spoke to me about the bylaws, he said, look, in a lot of these towns, if you wanna have a sign in a town's performance, you can get a special permit, pay for it, you can pay a fee, I'm not a big person on fees, but I would tell you, I'd rather see business to be able to put that sign up there, notify their grant opening, a special thing, pay whatever the town determines, and be in compliance, you know, the fact that they went and bought the fee, but I don't know if that's something, I mean, I, we could ride around, Bruce, I guess, and you could say how many, at one point, it was an article, I think it was a ledger, where a reporter went down Route 18 to Waymouth, Abington, and it's kind of, it's really, it's got.
Well, Mike, I'll make an observation, have you ever noticed, like, when a business, like, for example, they wanna build a new Dunkin' Donuts across, you know, 123 on a corner, and businesses leave the signs up, even, you know, like that used car lot sign is up there right now, because when they, when they go through the sign process, rather, you know, rather than create a whole new sign, they create a whole new sign, they leave the existing sign, and it simplifies it because they can draw the old sign into the new sign, things like that. Same with curb cuts and stuff like that, when you have to deal with masthead, things like that. That's why people don't make these changes. I've always wondered that, you know, you have a brand-new business with an old sign, it's like the last thing they change, but it makes it a lot easier for them to go through the process because they have an existing sign, existing uses, you know, you can get into that whole thing, existing uses and changes and stuff like that.
A quick question. So, if, so the more likely than not, the bylaws, the changes?
I hope so.
So, if, so if someone has found, maybe it's just a gentleman, if someone has found, hey, let me back up. Do we have someone going, do we in the town have someone that goes out and...
Yeah, Marshall Adams is the...
It's the building's responsibility.
So, if he finds someone noncompliant, gives them a warning, gives them a certain period of time to get in compliance, that type of thing?
Yeah. That's one of Marshall's duties, is as zoning enforcement officer, is to do that sort of thing.
Thank you.
All right. Sean.
Sean Riley, 26 Russell Lane. Just to add to what Bruce said, and so people at home understand more, we haven't updated our signed by law in decades, and so it's always been a problem with almost every commercial business or any sort of project almost has to go in front of the zoning board for zoning variances for whatever you do. And it's impossible to write a perfect signed by law, but this is an upgrade and an update to our old signed by law. For example, one of the things that they put in is now restrictions and definitions on digital signs, so that there's a control over what size they can be, and that they can't be a little bit flashing and distract drivers, which is a good thing. They also do a much better job at defining types of signs. You see, like, those big pennant or feather signs, they call it? Depending how you, it's not mentioned in the old or the current signed by law, so the building inspector inside, is that really a sign or not? What if it doesn't have a word on it, but has a symbol? Now it's defined, so it gives him a little bit more, and the business owner a little bit more clarity. So, we're hoping this is going to help him and us to stop cleaning up things. It's not perfect, we'll probably end up, hopefully this is allowed or approved, we'll probably come back with even some more revisions in the next year or two as we see how things filter out, but this is definitely an improvement to what we have right now.
No, I, I don't think it's any problem, proven. I think the problem is with...
Of course, you didn't explain it.
When you, when you go to a business and you give them this current by law, I mean, that's why I said you can give them, like, a brief items to, just say, and you don't want to be a top-line business, you really don't, you don't want to welcome and make a bill, but it's, some businesses are just really trying to get through them.
I agree, and some businesses are, their existing sign is grandfathered, so, you know, and I've had some business owners say, yeah, some would call me and say, "Well, how come his sign is bigger?" And you're saying, "I've got this sign, because his sign's been there for 20 years, and his business has been there for 30 years, and he just keeps it as it is." It's hard to define some things, like, for example, Whitman allows the sandwich board signs, as long as it's not, you know, within a certain distance on the street. For example, if Stop &amp; Shop had a sandwich board sign on their sidewalk right in front of the building, I don't think anyone would care, because you drive down 123, you don't see it. But yet, if Riley Law Office had one up in Washington Street, that's a different story. But it's hard to kind of write the bylaw so that a guy can have a one guy camp, but there's reasons why you might want to say that. We talked briefly about trying to have different type of signage, like in North Abington and Center Abington, more village-style signage, and not have, for example, digital signs in downtown North Abington. Kind of keep that more of a small hometown feeling. So, that's, I think we're both zoning, we're planning, we're trying to get there. This is Giant Seven.
Giant Seven.
And like you say, trying to address this issue.
I don't know, I don't, you know, I think the public, I think it's a good discussion for us, and I appreciate your work, but I don't, you don't think I'm attacking the board?
Oh, no, no. You know, in fact, we're calling the community council to do a business guide for the town, and I think one of the issues, you know, we talked about, you know, people wanting to do business and stuff like that, is that they go through, there's a whole longer list of things I went through with Marshall Adams, because I wrote, I wrote a lot of that. You know, there's a whole longer list of things, the businesses, you come to the town of Abington, the people you go and see and stuff like that. And, you know, folks have seen that book, and hopefully it's been helpful to businesses and the community. This is just another step.
Thank you, Bruce. Any questions? Get that easy down.
If you want to go through the other ones?
Yes, please. We have Article 20, buffer strips.
Buffer strips.
Want to hear that, please?
Sure. This is the article, by the way, that we're, okay. Existing by law, there is an existing by law for buffer strips. Currently, six feet planting or fence allowing length to the property line, residential front yard being enclosed by a solid fence. Proposed changes reduces the height of fence or plantings 20 feet from the street line or to be more than four feet high within 10 feet of the street line, requires professional businesses. Homeowners, requires the homeowner to seek relief from the ZBA to erect a solid fence along the front of their property. This is for aesthetic values and a neighborhood. So, again, it's cleaning up issues that have been brought up over the years, nothing radical here. These are consensus issues from various boards and things like that over the years. Trying to make the town look better.
I don't know if anybody has a question, I just have a public concern. I don't know if this addresses it. When you come out of a side street, and some streets not a town, you go along, you're busy out, sometimes the shrubbery, the fences, you can't see right on the corner, you can't see the line of fence coming against you. And again, this is something you want to do, but it's more of a safety concern, because I've observed some streets where if a little guy was coming down the street and a person was trying to get out to see, you've got an accident just waiting to happen. I mean, it just is, and I think, I don't know if this addresses that, or attempt to address that.
I started off in this business in traffic engineering, and you can get into the whole thing of line sight distances and intersection and stopping sight, I'm not going to bore the folks with that stuff, but this sort of addresses that issue. I can think of, I can think of a intersection, take the back road out of Abington to Rockland, you come to a T-intersection, and there's a shrubbery, you have to look, you know, you come up, is it Spruce Street or something, you know, along the road that goes along the old base, that part of Rockland. And when you come up to the main street in Rockland, and there's this shrub, but we try to address these issues, and I think this, this change will address that.
All right, good. I think this passed once, and we all had quite a share of...
Oh, God, I'm trying to see over snow.
That's easy.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Either this article or the previous article, if someone is found to be noncompliant after these paths, they're not grandfathered in or anything, they would have to become compliant?
Yeah, they would have to be compliant with this. Again, it comes with the zoning enforcement.
Grandfather.
Grandfather.
They are grandfathered.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, something new came along, somebody had a new project.
So, if you've got a tall fence, you're not going to...
No, the town isn't going to come over there and say, "You have to take the fence down."
That, I think, was my point, is if someone is currently not compliant, they would not...
I apologize. I was at the zoning hearing, Bruce was at the planning hearing, so we're trying to get all the information that came up. But one of the, the way that the current zoning by law, actually, there is a provision of the zoning by law about corners, that if you have a hedge or a fence that is above a certain number of feet within a triangle, the town has a right to tell you to cut back the edge a little, so. This goes beyond that. The way our current by law is written right now, if you build a commercial building or a multifamily, and it's next to either a residential zone or another residential building, whether it's a single family or another apartment, the by law says you have to put a six-foot fence along the sideline. And if you just read that, that means from the back of your lot all the way to the street line. Well, if we did that, we'd set up six-foot tall fences on every property line going down the street and look like a gulag, you know? So, this now asks or requires it to taper off and stop at least 20 feet from the street so that the fence won't come up to the street. The other half of it is the provision which does not allow a residential homeowner to actually fence in their front yard completely with a solid fence. There is one that exists in town, if you know where it is, you drive by, and it just looks really odd, and if everybody's out of doing that, you drive down the street and there'd be a wall of fencing along the sidewalk. Chain link fencing, dog fencing, things like that, that's fine, but a solid fence, you need to explain to the zoning board why you really need that, you have to give variance. Doesn't come up very often, but these are the things the zoning board will play for, will see around town and say, "How can we address that?" That's what they're doing.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Questions? Thank you. What was the next one we had? Bruce, I think you could hear that a few days ago. Phase development? You have a tie office, but it's not housekeeping?
Yes, it's currently by law.
Any questions on Article 21? The planning board? It's quiet, I don't think that's a good thing. Says the by law expired in 2011?
Yes, it was timed out, but it's good by law, we're just putting it back in place, that's it.
Is there a reason we haven't addressed it over the last 40 years?
Um, well, Sean.
Phase development growth by law was a type of by law that a lot of municipalities put in when they were building, building boom a number of years ago. The Attorney General said that you had to balance the rights of a property owner versus the needs of a town, so they made you put a reasonable termination date. And this terminated on its own, it served its purpose, so we're actually just eliminating it from the books now because it no longer is in effect. It did a good job at the time.
Remember, we had, we had the growth management issue and things like that, we were concerned about the number of houses, and we couldn't put a cap on the number of building permits. So, this by law at the time served that purpose, but it's not an issue anymore, so it's going to go away. It's actually, it's cleaning up our bylaws.
So, is it just going away, and there's nothing in its place?
There will be no more phase development?
There will be no more phase development by law.
Even though there hasn't been since 2011?
Yes.
Okay.
Housekeeping.
Okay, any other questions? Article 23, is that under name?
About 22.
Outdoor lighting.
I'm sorry.
What's the deal?
Okay, outdoor lighting. Existing by law, light trespass will not occur. Does not currently exist in our bylaws, and the ZBA acts as a special permit granting authority. Proposed change allows a minimal amount of light trespass, and proposed language is consistent with dark sky policies. Proposed new section to allow the permit granting authority to waive the submission of a photometric plan. Proposed change allows the planning board to act as that special permit granting authority during the course of site plan review. Existing commercial buildings would still fall under the ZBA. This is a big issue, you know, and every time there's a project that comes before the planning board, it's, you know, it's a concern of neighbors and things like that, light trespass and stuff like that. We really look at this issue, so this will really help us, you know, in our deliberations and things like that, when someone brings a project before the town. I know that, you know, people are always concerned about the light off of buildings and the effect on the neighborhood and stuff like that. This just serves to address those issues.
It also has the streamlined review process, because as it's currently written, we do have this outdoor lighting, or any new, or a multifamily, anything, doesn't apply to one- and two-family houses. But ironically, the way it's written is you have to go get the lighting design approved by the zoning board and pretty much everything else by the planning board, so we've kind of rewritten and say, "Look, if everything's being reviewed by the planning board and the planning engineer, they should also look at the lighting and look at the whole project as a whole." And it also recognizes that, as it's written right now, it says, "Whatever light you have has to be shielded so you're not shining in a neighbor," but you also need enough security for your, for your property, but it actually says you cannot have an ounce of light go over the lot line. Well, there's certain times when you actually want that, and really, we're talking about the street. For example, the new Cape Cod Lumber Company, the planning board asked us to put a light out near Groveland Street so that that intersection of the driveway was lit, but technically, we were shining light off of our property onto the street, but everyone said, "Well, that's safer, it's better." Now, this says the planning board can allow that, if they want to.
Yeah, if we want. Questions?
Does this, there was some concern, probably about a year ago, about several of the businesses in town had this really bright neon lighting. Does this, is this covered that, or does 19 cover it too, or is the signed by law, or does this cover that?
Both, but more so the light. Any, any outdoor lighting, other than a one- and two-family, has to abide by this law. So, one of them in Abington Center was a concern because it was certainly glaring and firing right across the street, and it violated the bylaw, so Marshall was able to say, "Per the bylaw, take him down," and they did. It was just ignorance at the time. All of the new light, if you see a new commercial development, you'll see the lighting is very much more controlled now with lighting, where it's all downlighting.
Put the hoods on, direct the lighting.
Even the new municipal buildings have it now, too, so it's dark sky, meaning, we don't, we try not to light up things like Fenway Park, and especially over in our U and T office, like, about 60% of lights go off at 10 or 11 o'clock, because it's electric or a broken light.
So, people can actually see the stars in their yard instead of glow.
So, this isn't going to affect my disco ball and the lava lamps? No?
Disco ball.
Just one, we have had hearings here where a neighbor was complaining about a business light shining in the center. Where do you go with that? What do you have to do? Do you have to say, hire an engineer to prove that it's the right kind of light? Who would make that decision?
Generally, when someone comes before the planning board, the lighting element is part of the plan, and any plans that we review, and consequently, the plans, you know, with this change would have to meet our specifications and things like that, to address that issue. This, again, this is another reason why we're doing this, is to address those kind of issues.
I guess these lights were changed, you know? They were changed for the right reasons, with the LED lights and stuff pushing down the light, but when they made those changes, they did affect, they did affect that, but where would you go if you're sitting in my chair and say, "Well, this is what you should do"?
Zoning enforcement officer.
Again, Marshall?
Yeah, so if you operate your existing lights, you have to conform with the new bylaws. The other thing it does, too, to help the businesses, it says that, you know, as it's currently written, if you want to put an extra light up on your business property, you have to put a planning board and do a photometric engineer and do a photometric plan to prove that the one light bulb you're adding is not going to shine in your neighbor's yard. Now, there may be a situation where the neighbor's 500 yards away, but you still have to go through the process. So, now we put a process in where if enough information can be shown to the planning board, they can waive the requirement of a photometric plan. I think of, for example, Andrews and Pierce, you know, the trucking depot, if they put a light on over one of their garage doors, it's not going to affect anyone. They shouldn't have to go through a public hearing to do that, and now the board has the ability to help them out.
The thing is, you know, just to put the technical items in the bylaws, and people come before the boards with this technical information included in their plan, we shouldn't have an issue with it. That's what we ask people to come before, yeah, because we've denied stuff when people have to come before the boards, and the stuff wasn't written. It's our job as a planning board, ZBA. And that's what we do.
So, Sean had mentioned that, the example with Groveland Street, how you can let a light trespass onto the street now with this. Is this also allowed to trespass onto a neighbor's property, not just onto the street? Under dark sky policies, which is kind of a national policy, the acceptable limit is, I think it's less than half a foot candle, a little more than 25 feet over the lot line, which half a foot candle is nothing, it's just kind of like the edge of any light. Glaring is never allowed, so a light can never be shining at a neighbor, but if a downlight kind of takes care of that part of the lot, and a little bit, you know, you can say, "Oh, it's a little light over the line," as long as it's within 25 feet and it's not over a certain amount, that's acceptable, because that's not harmful or nuisance, which is consistent again with national dark sky policies. And just for the record, I am the town moderator, and I am speaking a lot about this, I'll be stepping down during town hall, town meeting, because I figure I'll help to answer questions.
Hopefully, tonight, people watching this will get an explanation, folks, and hopefully it'll prove at least...
That's how we want to say that.
Yeah, exactly.
Lots of the U. You know, we're involved right now, we, yes, we've been very helpful, and very warm and successful.
That's good.
Keep up the good work.
Not done yet.
Okay, is everybody all right with that? Article 23, eminent domain.
Okay, there's no current by law existing, and I have the by law. This is proposed primarily for the Route 18 widening project coming up, and that, to help protect property owners when land is taken by the state. And that could be the by law. Basically, no lot shall be reduced in area or frontage if it has or already caused to have less area or frontage than required by the section. So, basically, we're trying to address this issue. I think, you know, we listened to the Matt Stark people here last week, and they proposed much taking, but this is to protect landowners within the town, you know, if this taking occurs. It's not just Route Eighteen, it's anywhere in town. This was written primarily to address the issues of Route Eighteen.
And technically, just as I understand the white number eighteen, the conservation commission is the only real avenue board that has a real say, it's outside of the area of domain policy. Everybody else have that?
Just for clarification, so if the existing lot is nonconforming, am I reading this right? That they could not take the land that is nonconforming?
What it's really saying is, if you have a twenty thousand square foot lot in the zoning area, in that area requires twenty thousand square feet, then the state highway experiment, they take two thousand square feet, it's now you have eighteen, you are now nonconforming, but it wasn't your fault. So this is now giving you some statutory protections that in the future, so let's say you want down a bedroom out to the back, you can go through the process as if you were a conforming lot owner, and what you're doing is not going to make anything worse. Same thing, you know, a couple of the buildings on Route Eighteen, they're really moving the state line very close to the building line. Now technically, the building's not set back enough, they're not going to require it on a moved building, you just can't do that. So this protects those limited lot owners and property owners, those businesses and residents along the Route Eighteen car, and anywhere else where this might come in the future.
Wait, was twenty-one, was this going to affect very few people on Route Eighteen? It's a good protection clause to have for anything in the future. I live on one thirty-nine, the state's taking a lot. I've lived in that house all my life, and I know that it's been taken since the time that I've lived there. You accept that right away, because you know the state has a certain right of way on the state road or anything.
And the town could take it, which we've done many times in the distant past, sort of affect potentially a homeowner, but doesn't give them any extra benefit if they went, it just protects their home so that if they wanted to make some sort of minor addition or invasion, they could still go to the zoning board. As it is right now, without this bylaw, some towns already have this bylaw, we don't have it. A homeowner has to go in and plead hardship and hope that the zoning board agrees with them and says, "Oh, it wasn't your fault, we'll let you work, you know, let your family keep the house and amend the house." They don't have to, now they actually can and they're authorized to.
Just by informational purposes, do you have an idea when that's supposed to commence with Route Eighteen? And one other question as well, is I believe at the nine feet on each side of Route Eighteen, is that correct?
Seventy-five percent design right now, sixteen goes out, end of sixteen goes out for the construction scars in seventeen.
So two thousand seventeen, and is it approximately nine feet on each side? That I was, did I answer?
It's seventy-five percent design, it means it's not a hundred percent design yet, so we haven't seen the final figures.
It varies.
It varies. Jack Kane should have all these plans, I always tell people, go see Jack Kane, you know, because he has the plans.
Questions?
A lot of the properties on some of Route Eighteen are very close to the street, called safety by, you know, what do they do about that? Like they're, you know, if you're saying, say it's nine feet, five feet, however many feet it is, if it puts it at your front door, or the beginning of your business, or, you know, the windows to your, because of the corner of your house or property, what do they do about that?
The planning board had a hearing in a meeting with Mass Highway and the owners of property on Stockton Street last week, it was really great exchange of information. Essentially, each property owner is responsible, if they feel that they have been damaged by the taking, they have to file a claim with Mass Highway, as I understand it.
Mass Dodge.
They changed their name. Mass Dodge of transportation. To see if they will pay to compensate them. One gentleman noted that he had a two or three family house with sufficient parking, but now the state is going to move the sidewalk back where he's losing parking spaces, so now what does he do? He can't provide parking for his tenants, if he loses that income, he may have a valid claim that he'll have to work with the state, but it's more of a, it's a private property owner, we're in the state issue, but the town really can't help other than try to provide them with information.
Yeah, so the town will be involved, and it will be Mass Dodge in the neighborhood property owner.
I guess I'm just asking, if the state's not going to come in and knock down a bunch of houses?
No. If one, if one taking at the foot of the bridge, you know, one part of the project is three tea, the railroad bridge, bridge that goes over the railroad track, and that concerns us because I was proud of the cord, and basically, right now, that road's four lane, almost to the Abington line, and the bridge has to be replaced, it's pretty ancient. And I think it's one business, and they're going to be relocated, explain this to us, but that's a concern, the name of the law is.
Any questions?
Does the design account for with the loss of, I'm assuming the values of these properties will go down, losing the bridge?
Well, I think that's going to be an issue with the assessor, in fact, Joe Shea was here Monday night, you know, from the assessors, the town assessors and things like that. I think that would be an individual case, for each assessor, we would be able to go to the assessors and, you know, discuss these issues with them. It's not a claim for it, it's an assessor's.
But the seventy-five percent design doesn't include any of that?
They don't have the final numbers in it, they have a lot of the numbers, you really have to see it, the ninety percent design. But it's good that they came, you know, explained the process, and, you know, we have names of the folks and stuff like that contacting you. So I think there is good dialogue with the town on that project. This is really going to impact the town.
Are you going to, what we have, what we have before, lost your parking?
Existing bylaw currently allows one space per dwelling unit. This proposed change reduces the amount of parking required from one space to twenty-five spaces per dwelling unit, increasing green space. Now, we allow these parking spaces, because only people are going to have, you know, one car and stuff like that, but this allows a little bit more green space.
Yeah, it's really one guest space per dwelling unit. In the town of Abington, if you were to build a, let's say, three two-bedroom condominiums, a two-bedroom con, or apartment, whatever you want to call it, a two-bedroom requires two parking spaces plus a guest space. If it's three bedrooms, you have to build two point six spaces plus a guest space. If it's a one family, if it's a one bedroom, it's one point three plus a guest space. Whitman a number of years ago had the same bylaw, they get rid of the plus a guest space language, because what was happening is, we were building parking lots in pavement that was just too big for what we really needed, which increased the size of the drainage structures, which decreased the amount of lawns and trees, so we kind of came up with a happy medium, and instead of plus one space, we're doing plus a half. So one calculation might say you need sixteen spaces, now you need fourteen. It's a minimal change, but it could have a very positive benefit from future construction. You can always build extra spaces if you want to, this just defines the minimum number.
I mean, there's going to be an apartment spaces in the units, and apartment, as an example, but this also increases green space for the project.
Thank you. Article twenty-five is transitional commercial district change.
And some of these might help, if you have a zoning map. This is a commercial district, currently on both sides of Route Eighteen, and a small section, a small section of the district. This is a commercial, this change is a transitional commercial district on Route Eighteen, one half Route Eighteen, highway commercial, the other half transitional commercial, so it still allows commercial uses, it just makes things easier to run.
Can you just answer a question, what is the difference between high and highway commercial and transitional?
Transitional commercial district was a new zoning district that was created back in two thousand and three when we revamped the map. There's only two areas in town where we had the transitional commercial. One was in North Avenue between the barber shop at Eighteen and Route Fifty, Route Fifty-eight.
That's around there.
That area right there was considered transitional commercial, there was commercial up on Route Eighteen, there was some commercial down on Route Fifty-eight, and in the middle, there was a mix of some dentist's office, offices and housing. So transitional commercial, mixed uses, where you could have a business on the first floor, apartments above, you could have some small businesses, and you could still have housing. That same zone was also put in place on Route Eighteen from basically where the Bank America is now, heading northbound towards basically where that apartment complex is. That area right there was transitional commercial, because it was at that time, a little more than ten years ago, twelve years ago, mostly a mix of residential, but it's Route Eighteen, we figured eventually as time goes on, it's going to become more commercial. That's what we've seen now with the Health Express and Circle Plaza. So that side, the western side, is now just being considered highway commercial, so it'll actually blend in and connects with the highway commercial zone that, as you continue south on Eighteen.
Any questions? Zoning changes to Southfield.
All right. The Abington portion of the land located on Southfield is currently zoned in the MUPD, Muppet, I love this acronym, Multiple Use Plan Development District. When we did this, we gave a lot of thought to this, because the land adjacent to the base land, is former base land, is industrial. And so the proposed change is to change the zoning back to industrial or industrial. The use of this land was industrial prior to the MUPD zoning. A lot of the proposed uses in this area are industrial. This change, this brings, changes it back to industrial, would keep it consistent with the land in Abington that is adjacent to it and is also industrial.
Why would we do this in the middle of that project?
Well, what happened, this, way this came up was, when the changes that were made in the, and I'm on the Southfield Advisory Board, so God knows, I know a little bit about this stuff, been involved with it as long as I've worked for Old Colony, it's twenty-one years. They threw out all the existing zoning on the base, you know, and they said, "Well, the towns have responsibility for the land, you know, Abington has zoning responsibility for the land in the base, Wamif, Rockland and stuff like that." So we saw this as an opportunity, the planning board saw this as an opportunity, well, if they turn out the zoning to zone this land industrial, to make it consistent with the adjacent zoning land in Abington, you know, that was off the base. So basically, you know, it's up like where Cold Tower and all that is, that's all zone industrial up that way. So, and we need industrial land in this town, we don't really have too much. And that's in an area, I mean, you can look where the precast specialties has, you know, moved in Cold Tower and stuff like that. There is some residential up there, but it's not too much, so industrial zoning in that area really doesn't impact the town so much as if it was in the middle of North Avenue to the center, for example, or things like that. It's, we're trying to improve the tax base in the town, the industrial commercial tax base in the town, and by zoning that land industrial, the thought was that you would encourage industrial development up in that and increase the, now, we don't have a split tax, you know, it'd still be nice to get some industrial commercial development up there, have jobs in the towns, stuff like that. I don't know what the percentage is right now, but I'll bet that most of the tax base in this town is residential, and probably a lot less of it is, you know, industrial commercial. So that was the planning board's wish, was to, you know, zone that land on the base, what the existing zoning is surrounding it, and increase the industrial commercial tax base in the town. So those were our key criteria in making, suggesting a zoning change.
The only two things that I think, speaking from the board, that we've heard about going on the Abington portion of land up there at Southfield is a sewer treatment plant and open space recreation. Would that affect either one of those things going in that property?
Well, there are, you know, we researched this, and there are certain pieces of land in Abington that is owned by state entities and things like that, DCR, Department of Conservation. I don't try not to talk in acronyms, but sometimes you have to speak in acronyms. Some pieces of land that are up there wouldn't be affected by this change. Pieces of land that are owned by various state entities for conservation purposes.
I'm talking about the Southfield portion.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Southfield is a pretty complicated place, as you folks probably are aware, the people, you know, that land is, some of that land is owned by, you know, the LNR and stuff like that, but there are a lot of state agencies that own land on that area. What I've been told, some of the land that's on the Abington portion of it is owned by various state agencies. That wouldn't be affected because they're, pretty much, you can't tell the state, you can see what to do with their land.
I'm confused now, because the name of the article is "Zoning Change to Southfield", but now you tell on me that we can't change the zoning in Southfield?
No, I didn't say that, I said, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. There's some land that's on the Abington portion of the base that's zoned, that's owned by entities, state entities, things like that, and I think they're exempt from any zoning changes were made. This would be land on Southfield that's owned by the Southfield Corporation, that's zoned in Abington, that's owned by Southfield Corporation, not the various state entities.
How does this affect the two gentlemen that were just here?
Well, we would have this discussion with them, you know, this is, this proposed zoning change, you know, if the town were to vote it, this is something that we would, we've had discussions with the Southfield people, and we'll continue to have discussions with the Southfield people. So, the town is just, we were just trying to be proactive, the planning board was just trying to be proactive on this land, protect the town's interests. But we will be working with the Southfield people. They said that they want to, you know, work with the planning board and zoning boards and things like that, so we'll be working with them.
Two questions, one, could a water treatment plant be placed in a zone that's industrial?
Oh, yeah.
So, does moving it from this Muppet thing to industrial, does it further restricts the use of it? Which is more?
Well, you can't build residential in an house too early, but things like, for example, in Rock...
I just wanted to clarify, can you build residential in this Muppet thing? That it's in currently?
Only because it's out of a mixed use without the commercial activity, and there's limitations as to how much residential you can put in there. To answer your first question, all, any town or municipal use requires a special permit, whether you're in the Muppet or the industrial zone, so that really doesn't change.
Okay.
And recreational fields, if that's what the town wants.
I can give you a lot of examples of municipal sewage treatment plants that have built an industrial park, Plymouth, for example, Rockton, you know, the Oak Hill Industrial Park has the city, I love this term, advanced wastewater treatment facility, so they tend to locate these things in industrial areas.
I guess I was just trying to get to the point, are we making it more restrictive by changing this zoning? Or just not more or less, just different?
It's just different. It's not, I don't think we're making it more restrictive, we're just changing it.
Yeah, I think the Muppet District, as we call it, right now is up on Chestnut Street, is the Muppet District, and that was intended for, again, you probably consider like an industrial park, you drive in, there'd be multiple buildings with multiple commercial things, or it could have been something with a mixed use, where you could have some residences in there, and a store kind of serviced those people, or other, you know, barber shop, whatever, things like that, those buildings like little villages. To some people, residential uses on the Abington possible in Southfield would create concerns because of school, fire protection, police protection, things like that, so I think the planning board's shift to industrial takes away the residential part of it.
That's always, that's my concern for a lot of people, is the residential development on the base and the impact it has on the communities and stuff like that.
Jen?
Doesn't this change the whole spirit of the development in Southfield? I mean, isn't the Muppet District, I mean, isn't that what was agreed to and what was planned? And this is just changing more changes, putting in more changes to that? And can we make the change without negative results from Southfield? Is it legal, can we do it without getting negative repercussions?
Well, I think we're going to work, we're going to work with Southfield, you know, the town wants to make this change, we would work with Southfield on this issue, you know, address the concerns, wastewater plant, concerns of residential, industrial and stuff like that. So, you know, we want to work with these folks, we have been working with them for a long time. It's, you know, we can work these issues out with the government board and Southfield Corporation.
If it passes, isn't, when's there to work out if it passes? It's industrial.
We have to work out the implementation of it here, so.
Because Southfield owns the property zone as it is now, would that, do they consider themselves qualified into that zoning?
I am not town council, so I refuse to answer that question. No, I, zoning can change with any property owner by vote of town meeting. Southfield is unique, because it had its own zoning map, its own zoning board essentially, so I think the questions that you and Jen ask might be worth asking to town council. I don't know if the planning board, or myself, or anyone else can give you a succinct answer, but it's a good question to ask before town meeting, and perhaps even explain at town meeting.
I think people would be more comfortable, I have a personal opinion, I think people would be more comfortable if town council were to give an opinion on this.
Just, I go out with, I think two fifty-eight, Cold Tower, and that area, how long when you get into, you know, we've talked about Southfield for a number of times, as I answered the seven posses... as I answered, it's a seven posses plan, still would have to go through the boards and procedures here, could be denied a permit simply because you can't get accessibility. But to go further and try to say, no, we're not going to build because now we're going to change the zoning on you, you use the example under eighteen, people had existing property and then the state changed it, so now all of a sudden, yeah, you've got a problem, the state's going to have to deal with it. If I were a buyer of a piece of property with three other towns, and then the legislation went through, and now all of a sudden a local, I think, or a town meeting, whoever you want to look at it, decides, well, we're going to make a change, we're going to, we're going to change the zoning on you. I don't know, but some of these bigger corporations, I'm a small guy, and I've been a politician sometimes, some of the legal things that come in front of the town. I would hope that the planning board, as many problems that you had with you this before, not after, not get the zoning out after, put us in a legal situation if that, if it happened. Now, you're right about, they put a seat in legal counsel on that, but I just, I, that's my personal opinion, I have a little idea for that, and I certainly don't want to fumble that.
No, I understand. You're going to make your recommendation, it's what you feel, you know, whether you're going to surprise us.
Yeah, you know what, it, honestly, Bruce, if you could just, you mentioned that you want to work with them, that could all be done before town meeting, then everybody would be on the-
I can take this back to the planning board.
Yeah, that's, thank you.
I think I'm hearing this from you folks tonight, that you'd like us to, you know, talk about this and make sure we have everything squared away before town meeting.
If you would.
Yeah, no.
With all due respect.
No, no, I understand.
When you say, is the site plan reviewed?
Okay, renovations or alterations require site plan approval. Renovations or alter, the proposed change would allow some flexibility for small vertical building improvements of not more than 20 percent if there is no violation of height or setbacks or encroachments into the wetlands. Renovations or alterations require site plan approval. Proposed change adds to language negatively and substantially affect traffic range, et cetera. This provides some flexibility for the building inspector to waive site plan review in some circumstances.
This just wants to, again, issues that came up in the past, and we're trying to simplify things. For example, one business wanted to add a vestibule over their front door, they wanted to enclose their front entrance. For New England, you know, you walk in one set of doors and then you go into the next set of doors. But the current bylaw says any commercial building that has enlarged by an inch has to go through formal site plan review with photometric plans and drainage designs and site plans by engineers, and you're going to pay the town's engineer to review it all. Well, business owners saying, all I want to do is put out, you know, a ten foot by ten foot enclosed doorway, and they have to beg for waivers. And then another business had a loading dock and they wanted to extend the existing loading dock to twelve more feet to the size. There was no effect anywhere, it didn't change parking, drainage, lighting, or anything, but there was no way the building inspector could just approve it. He had to say, you've got to go to the planning board. The planning board said, you know, why are we here? So now, there's an ability that if it's a small addition and it has no negative effect as determined by the building inspector, the building inspector can say, this is mine or you don't have to go through site plan review, as long as you build it, put in building code, we're okay.
Questions? Actually, I know you, businesses, if you'd like that, you know, they have to go through the site plan review.
Thank you.
We don't have a solar, we don't have a solar bylaw in our bylaws, and right now, without a bylaw, people can build these things anywhere. The bylaw that we proposed, the bylaw that we proposed will, you know, limit the locations of where these things can be built. For example, under the bylaw that we're proposing, it can be built by special permit in highway commercial, industrial, they could be built as of right in industrial and transitional business and by special permit in the Muppet District. Those are the large scale ground mounted solar full volt tank installations, that's a Muppet, you know. And then the small scale roof mounted solar equipment, this would be allowed by right in R twenty, R thirty, R forty. These are, you know, things put on people's roofs primarily, general commercial. They would be allowed by right in all of the zoning districts. One alteration to our plan, to this bylaw that we agreed to with the planning board, the language that we've written after the discussion we had at the last planning board meeting with folks who would be impacted by a proposed solar array off of Rockland Street. The proposed bylaw allowed this large mounted installations by special permit in R forty. Planning board is going to say, we want to change that to not allowed. So large mounted, so, ground mounted solar volt tank systems, we're going to amend that on the floor to say not allowed in the R forty district. So that would just allow these things to be built in special permitted highway commercial and by right in industrial transitional business and by special permit in the Muppet District.
It requires a special permit either way, though.
They have, well, where it's called for, excuse me, allergies this time, unfortunately. In the highway commercial, for, for large mounted systems, you'd have to get a special permit in the highway commercial and in the Muppet Districts, they would allow, be allowed by right in industrial and transitional business. Those are the big, you know, the, one that was proposed, for example, off of Rockland Street.
And what is, what is the large scale?
That's like one of these, 2.5 megawatt is a typical size. That's like proposal they were proposing off of Rockland Streets, couple, I have a lot of experience with this, I'll call it planning council. Our sixteen communities, about seven communities have been proactive and put into zoning bylaw. It's good to have this zoning bylaw so that we can limit where these things are. National Grid has a program that, you know, they're installing this one in Abington, for example, would fall into that. So it's good that the town has zoning, you know, to address this.
They understand that one in Abington is only one megawatt.
Mega, well, one megawatt, two megawatt, they're, and so-
Well, that's what I'm asking, it, it doesn't specify. It says large scale, what is large scale?
A large scale is the ones mounted on the ground.
There is a definition. Large scale ground mounted solar volt tank installation is a system that is structurally mounted on the ground, not roof mounted, has a minimum nameplate capacity 250 kilowatts DC or requires an area larger than one acre for installation. That would be considered a large scale ground mounted.
Anything smaller than that?
I believe, yeah. Town council wrote this bylaw, this is obviously something new that a lot of towns are dealing with. And as Bruce said, this is similar to our adult entertainment bylaw we put in, you kind of want to get ahead of the game.
Solar adult entertainment.
Meaning that, let me clarify, if you don't have a bylaw to define, have restrictions regulation, then you don't have, you have very little control over where it might be proposed.
And, you know, it's, it's happening. I've been writing this report for the council for years, and most of our towns have these things in one form or another, so they really are happening, and this will be a first for Abington, if this one off of Rockland Street gets built. And we're just trying to stay, you know, ahead of the curve and control where these things are being built. And, you know, we, we listened to the concerns of the neighbors at that meeting the other night, and that's why we're going to, you know, not allow by, by right in the R forty or by special permit in the R forty district. So, you know, we had the hearing the other night on this, and we are listening to the neighbors.
So let me get this straight, a 200 kilowatt system, there are no regulations, which would be considered not a large scale?
Right. Under 250?
Under 250.
How is that, we have to, I haven't read through that whole bylaw yet, but it is something that I believe town council has borrowed in, from other towns, to be applied here in Abington.
So according to this, if a homeowner wanted to put up a 200 kilowatt system in his backyard in an I forty zone, I thirty zone, I twenty-
Without reading the whole bylaw, okay, based on the definition I just read earlier, there's an argument, something that requires further reading of the bylaw, so that might be true?
Yeah.
I haven't read the whole thing either, but that's what it looks like.
Yeah, small, small scale, you know, roof mounted, you see that on a lot of people's houses these days, the systems that people are putting on the roofs of their houses.
I understand that, I'm more concerned with small scale ground mounted.
Well, the bylaw specifically says small scale roof mounted, so I don't think we'd allow the, you know, the ground mounted, it's just a concern with roof mounted.
Could we check with council on that?
If it has been forwarded to town council, look at that last move from-
I don't think we should be restricting somebody that if they're not going to do a large scale, they have to do a roof mounted.
Right, and I don't think that's the intent, and, yeah. Again, a zoning bylaw is just always imperfect because you may be in a residential zone and own 17 acres of land.
Correct.
And for you to go out there and put in one acre of solar, solar arrays, may be of no value to anyone, but if you put in more than one acre, you're going to need a permit. In fact, you may even need a variance because you're in a residential zone. So, you know, a lot of these things, you can go to the zoning board and say, my land that really doesn't fit with this, I need a variance to allow me to proceed. The zoning board can either grant the variance or deny it, and the neighbor could appeal it or support it.
I'm reading this, it says small scale round, this is in section V fifteen of the bylaw. Small scale ground mounted or small scale roof mounted solar equipment installations, which are an accessory structure to an existing residential or non-residential use, do not need to comply with this section, but shall conform to the table of uses and shall require a building permit and shall comply with the other provisions of this zoning bylaw. Again, that's in section V fifteen. I think that, hopefully that would address your concern.
I know that at one point during various meetings with the new school committee, solar was discussed.
I asked about it.
Not necessarily part of the multi-year term. How does this own affect that?
I'm also on the school building committee.
Shocking.
I can tell that the new building is, the roof is designed to have solar ray panels added after construction is finished. The state, the MSBA will not help pay for that, but as you know, there's a lot of programs through National Grid and other sources, well, they'll put them on at no cost to the town and they have a benefit to the town. It's the town's current position that we're not going to agree to anything right now because we're still two years away from opening the building, and we're hoping that the prices and the benefits are even better at that time. And there's also a lot, you know, there's going to be other equipment on the building, you know, HVAC units and things like that, that the solar companies would have to work around. But there will be conduits built into the new building to allow us to possibly adding it if it's a good thing for the town.
I, my question, I didn't see, I saw small scale roof, small scale ground and large scale ground, I didn't see anything that was more large scale roof.
Again, not having read the entire bylaw yet, and shame on me, it may be that if, if necessary, then the town would have to go to the zoning board and say, hey, we're considered not small, but it's a good thing, would you allow us to do that?
I think the intent is, though, that on a large scale roof, that, that would be what people would prefer, and I don't think it's addressed in there exactly, but I don't think that would stop it from being done.
I mean, there may even be an exemption for municipal, and I don't know, we'll look into that.
Yeah, no, no large scale, I think, no large scale ground mounted solar volt tank installations, helping construct and install and modify, as provided in the section without first obtaining a building permit, in only accordance with the requirements of the table of uses in this section. And then it gets into the smaller scale. The key to this thing, as far as the size of the systems and insulation, is the section V fifteen.
Any other questions for Bruce?
Thank you, Bruce, nice job.
Thank you for having me.
That was very helpful, very helpful.
I appreciate it. I'm going to go to Jennings County.
I think it'll certainly help with that.
I appreciate it. You know, someone who's interested in planning their zones, we really appreciate you folks taking the interest on this and explaining clues.
Thank you very much. Unless there's any objection, I would go with Article seven, I think that would tend us to block it. You know, people, I don't know, if you bought that in Iraq, or, I think that maybe one of the people like that, is probably, is a community preservation, you know, is that an article? Is there anybody else who's petitioned, or anything else that you want to talk about?
A new day. Oh, new day.
New day. What number is that?
It's, it's number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No offense, Bruce, but before my eyes blaze over, I'm glad, I'm glad I did it up here.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight to talk about the Community Preservation Act.
With me tonight is Lynn Orell, who's a community preservation, I guess, director of the Trust of Hope Boyan, the umbrella, Community Preservation Coalition, which supplies, whatever you'd like to know about the Community Preservation Act, and Lynn is available to answer questions, because she's forgotten more about the act than I will ever do. She will, the act will respond to any questions, and you as chairman or any member of the board is select when the findings come out. We went through this last year, so I won't spend a lot of time going through the Community Preservation Act again. But it's a state law that's passed in the year 2000, and available cities and towns agree to local dedicated fund for one, outdoor recreation, open space protection, second, historic preservation, and three, community housing. Maximum 10 percent that is available to use for each of these purposes. The other 70 percent may be used for any of those purposes. And as you look at that map that I, that I handed out, you'll see that 158 communities have already passed CPA, and I note, not in repeal, but, and within Plymouth County, 18 communities have adopted the CPA. And as we all know, Plymouth County has not historically been known as a profligate county relative public spending, so that the fact of the matter is that they recognize a, what is a good deal for the community in adopting the CPA. And the surcharge can range anywhere from 1% to 3%, the article calls for 1.5% surcharge as should Abington adopt the, adopt the. There is an exemption on the assessed property for all residential in, in the article of commercial property of $100,000, so if your home is assessed for $300,000, a $100,000 exemption would apply, the surcharge would apply, and taxes computed on that base. And the average tax increase relative to the surcharge for the town of Avenue would be $50 in a year. So on a quarterly tax bill, we're talking between $12 and $13 for the average tax bill, some would be less, obviously some would be more, because I speak of average of $50, so that the use of the funds will be determined at force by the town, but the funds are collected by, state funds are collected by the registry of deeds with the surcharge applied to all the filings at the registry of deeds in Plymouth County. And over the last couple of years, taxpayers and residents of town of Avenue paid into that fund over $100,000 because of surcharges that have been applied to their real estate transactions and other documents that filed with the registry. And as a matter of fact, after last year's town meeting, which the petition failed by five votes, a friend of mine from Mashfield and I were talking, there were a number of different things on lunch, and he brought up- And he brought up various towns for years, and one of the subsequent viable products was the Community Preservation Act. And he told me, why don't you, I'd like to convey to your fellow residents of Abington my thanks for sending the money to Mashfield so we can use it. Tell him to keep up the good work. But he was a former resident of Abington, by the way. But anyway, the return on the investment by the town historically has been well in excess of 50% until the last few years when the real estate market has cooled dramatically. But even so, this year, the return will be substantial. It will be even without the state infusion of funds. There has been a state infusion of funds over the last couple of years from the state budget. But even so, the return on the, on the Abington investment would be in the 20% range return. So that anytime you can, we've seen it being, anytime you can make an investment of a dollar or get back a dollar twenty for the purposes of applying to the Community Preservation Act, it's a win situation for the town and the community and the residents of that town. Last year, one of the concerns that were raised and were raised was the issue that there was a exemption, a debt exclusion exemption coming out of the ballot that structured the school. And there was a concern that the imposition of the Community Preservation surcharge would deter the voters in the town from voting for the debt exclusion by some. Well, in those eighteen communities in Plymouth County, there have been a number of schools built, a number of police stations built, and other municipal buildings. And the people of the town, of those towns, have handled well nicely. We suspect that when we get this question to the ballot and requires an affirmative vote in the town meeting, we better follow. That the townspeople will vote accordingly, that they can recognize a deal where if you invest a dollar, get back a minimum of a dollar, dollar, twenty, dollar, twenty-six, or more, depending on rebound of the real estate value. It is a good investment for the town. Currently, I think Leo Provos, the project lecturer, is forced to invest his excess money for any gift, something he's back one percent. So that's the environment we're in. We have an opportunity that I wish we had taken advantage of years ago. But we still have that opportunity to avail ourselves of an act that will enhance the advantage the town need to be outdoor recreation, open space protection, historic preservation, whether it be the Island Grove operations, which will need help concerning open space and outdoor recreation in the area or elsewhere in the town, or community housing. And let me add, if the, if there is a large project, say for a million or two million dollars, which the town would like to undertake, they can leverage the money that's collected locally for the service of the, for the bond issue that is issued for the purposes that for the lives of their workers. So I hope, Mr. Chairman, I hope, Mr. Chairman, the selectmen and the finance committee that we can look favorably upon the adoption of the CPA at the town meeting and let it proceed to the ballot in the spring of next year, 2016, to go into effect following this year. I'll leave it there because I know we've gotten all this ground last year. Questions you might have, I said Linda will be happy to answer. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Mr. Mike.
Your eyes blaze over.
Sorry, I don't know how many meetings throughout your years of being involved in the council. You are, I wouldn't, if you're closely. If this is a doctor's town meeting, it'd be a community preservation committee?
Yeah, well, do they honestly, whatever happens, once, once the, if it's a doctor's town meeting, it'll go on the ballot. And if it's approved in the ballot, then we go through a process that sets up a town bylaw that does all kinds of things.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Orell. I work for the Trust Republic Land and I'm an affiliate of TPL, is a community preservation coalition. And I work with the coalition to help communities who are interested in adopting CPA by answering questions and making sure that everybody feels comfortable with how I'm looking forward. So that's why I'm here tonight. In terms of what happens, the board goes to town meeting. If town meeting votes to put it on the ballot, then voters in the spring of 2016 get to go to the ballot and decide whether they want to vote yes or no on CPA for Abington. And if it wins, it would win by a majority vote. Once that happens, then the town drafts a bylaw. The bylaw is outlined in the Community Preservation Act, which is a state statute. And it has some flexibility in it. For example, it is required that the town set up a community preservation committee. But the number of people on that committee is up to the town. So for example, there have to be five members, one from each local board, from conservation. Let me just try to get these straight, conservation, planning, historical commission, and I always get these confused. I did, let me, please. We have historical parks, we have conservation commission, planning, and I'll get the fifth one to you in a minute.
Housing.
Those, housing, thank you. Each of those boards get to send a person on to the committee. And then the town gets to decide if they want to have up to four at-large members that are either voted on at the ballot or appointed. A lot of towns actually do elect their at-large members, but more towns will appoint them. It'll be a board's blackened decision. Then what happens is anybody who wants to send a proposal to the committee for their review can do it. An individual, a business, a homeowner. It could be a private entity that can send in a proposal, and they could potentially even receive funding as long as they can show that there's a public benefit. All these proposals get reviewed by the community preservation committees. They meet as often as the bylaw tells them to. It can be very often, some small towns only meet once a year, some cities meet every other week. And then they send the proposals that they think have merit and that could or should be funded to the board of selectmen, and the board of selectmen then put it on a warrant for town meeting. And the only people in the town who can approve a proposal are the voters at town meeting. So the community preservation committee is only sending credible projects to town meeting for an upper down vote. And that's a kind of long explanation about what happens after CPA gets passed in a town.
Specials, Linda? You had.
I know it's on here that it's made it to the 30% of the funds get spent each year. So 10% on open space, 10% on historic resources, and 10% on community housing.
10% for each one of those categories outlined.
Yeah.
And if, for example, you did not want to spend money on housing this year, you could lay it aside, and that 10% will sit there until you decide to do it. The other 70%, you could put in the tax, the home or recreation, the historic. If it only limitates the 10% for each category, the other 70% can go to any one of the categories.
I think it's important to note, too, that there are some communities that save their money for a big project. So you don't, you're not required to spend CPA money at all in any one year or several years in a row. The only requirement is at a minimum of 10% for spent in each of the three categories.
Okay.
Yes, just explain exactly, well, the benefit. This is like a savings account, I'm assuming. We each pay $12 to $13 each quarter as a surcharge on our taxes, correct?
You want to answer that first question? So it's homeowners that pay, and there are exemptions that I understand are built in. There are four exemptions in the state law, and the communities can choose up to four of them. What's being proposed in Abington is an exemption on the first $100,000 of the value of residential property, the first $100,000 of the value of commercial and industrial, and also a complete exemption for low-income residents and moderate and low-income seniors. Now, that category is defined by HUD.
So assuming it passes, we're each going to pay roughly $12, $13 a quarter.
Right.
And that goes in, and then like a 401 pay or whatever, our employer is going to match it up to a point which the employee being.
So match it up to the, to the total funds that are collected by the registry of deeds.
And they're already paying the surcharge on closings now. Someone sells or buys a house, that's being paid now.
That's correct.
And Abington's not getting any of that now.
Abington paid roughly $68,000, $66,000 last year. Previous to the, last fiscal year, they paid like $48,000.
Do we get all of that, any house that's sold in Abington? Or does that go with the general CPA fund that's spread out?
That money is paid by Abington residents, the registry goes into the community preservation fund. And spread out to those towns that participate.
We can bank it fifteen years.
So there are things we could have paid for, Griffin's theory?
Island Grove.
Yeah.
Island Grove, without doing the tax increase.
That's true. The point was made last year at town meeting is that the townspeople stepped up some play and paid those things. Fact of the matter is that they had a community preservation fund at the time. That money that they used to pay for those projects you're talking about could have used at schools, at least if I was someone, other new students.
Hey, to clarify, the 1.5% is a tax increase?
Excuse me?
The 1.5% is a tax increase?
1.5 is a surcharge on your property tax after you take the $100,000 exemption. As I said, the average tax bill in the course of the year, the average surcharge would be $50.
Yes.
Or three less. What you want to look at is the return we can get on that investment.
And we.
Why 1.5%?
You have a choice between one and three percent. When I filed the petition, I opted for the mid-wave one. It's always the minimal of the top floor, but I thought the one and a half percent was reasonable, midpoint. Some communities in the county, the ones that adopted the CPA early on after Bill passed and after the law was enacted in the year 2000, a lot of them opted for the 3% system. Some were on two, some were on one and a half.
If we pick the lowest amount, would that affect the amount we get from the state?
Yes.
So the more we choose, the more they give to it.
Correct. If you, if you were to go for the maximum of 3%, you'd be eligible for a couple of other dispersment rounds. You, there are two or three dispersment rounds in those who are the highest level.
I just want to mention, if you go to communitypreservation.org, you can actually see how much all 158 communities have received every year. Here's a link there to the Department of Revenue, and it's a quick click, just a quick spreadsheet.
And does the state have any impact input on what we spend it on?
The state has no input.
Only by the operation of the statute, the statute of square that you're spending on those categories, I do. But other than that, they can make a little point. They disperse the funds, I assume.
And so all the decisions are made locally. And it is a very flexible statute. You'd be very surprised. There's also on communitypreservation.org, a list of the 6,000 projects that have received funding in Massachusetts. And, you know, it's a really interesting list to review. You could put in a search. And just for example, somebody asked me if they could renovate a facade on a church, which has happened dozens of times around the state. It's a privately owned church, but they saw it as a historical building that, and that it was a public benefit by improving the facade. So when I put in church, I saw that there were belts that had been restored and cemeteries that had been restored. And there are old documents that can be restored. And it's really interesting how flexible and creative a community can be using these funds as long as it falls within one of the three categories.
But it's still a tax increase.
It is a tax increase.
No question about it, it's an investment. If you look at it as a tax, I look at it as an investment. The issue, let me break one point beyond what the use is. You might have noticed in the paper over the weekend, the last few days, that the town in Ogle is spending $1.4 million for sidewalks. And I asked Linda how could that possibly be? Well, the sidewalks are regularly in there, what is classified as the historic district along Main Street and along the workway through Ogle.
I just want to mention that 158 communities that have voted themselves to tax themselves, none have repealed it. So they're, that's a, that's a pretty, a pretty good record, that they're all deciding to tax themselves. And they're all very happy with the results that they're seeing because it's not money that's going into a general fund. It's a dedicated fund for a specific purpose. And they can participate in the process and have a decision about how this money is spent. And so it's a relatively small amount of money in most communities to most homeowners. And they feel like because it's a dedicated fund and they have some control, that they're really enjoying it. It's a little bit different than a feeling that you get when you pay an income tax and it goes into a general fund and somebody else is deciding how to spend it. It's more tangible than that, which is one of the reasons why I think it's never been repealed.
I just, I don't want to get into, just questions on a debate this end. I did speak to Jack earlier. He said that Linda would be happy to have a little bit of presentation. And I said, no, let's not do that. If the finance committee has questions, if the board of selectmen has questions beyond this, if we want maybe more information from them. I can't speak for Linda, but I can speak for Jack because I know he's passionate about this. He'd be happy to commit and give you all the information that you require to make a decision. So I don't know.
As Linda noted, the website is a great website, communitypreservation.org.
I have a, I don't mind getting over business card, I brought them for that purpose. You can feel free to send me an email. The Community Preservation Coalition is a statewide nonprofit organization. We're not paid, the state doesn't hire us. We don't receive any public funding. We were set up by the larger statewide nonprofits that were interested in us, like the Trustees in Reservations, Massifordal Housing Alliance, and others, and that's where we received most of our funding. We received a private grant from a foundation from my work in southeastern Massachusetts. So if you ask me a question, we're just going to answer it objectively with information. And I am a little enthusiastic because I love CPA, so you might pick up on that. So I might sound a little bit like I'm making a sales pitch, but it's not my job. My job is just to provide answers to your objective questions based on information that we've collected and how it all works.
Mark, you offered some very good sense.
No, it was.
And we have CPA in my community, and we have a good target. We really do. The projects are really neat, projects that otherwise probably would never have.
So I did, I'm sure, the information that Mr. Buckler provided last year was, was really, really good information. It really detailed out the history of the Community Preservation Act. One of the things that it did detail out was that as more towns have been on and as real estate has gone down, the percentage going back to the towns has decreased. Do we expect that as, we're all hoping for a bounce back up in the housing market? Do we expect that the percentage will go back up or will it?
If real estate goes back up, obviously, if the dollar or bad fees filed in the registry go back up, which will increase a lot of money in the community preservation fund. In addition, and in addition to that, the last couple of years, the legislature has taken money out of the budget to supplement the funding. And there's also legislation pending there that stripped the level of reimbursement put onto a certain level that the fees in the registry will increase and try to make a point that, yeah, we, hopefully, do. Housing right will go back, go back up, and the fees will increase.
Your honor, move along.
Yeah, I have this question for you. I guess one of the, I know a lot of the communities where the Community Preservation Act use the money and the state money to buy land for more development and to preserve the community and keep open space. And I know the original draft of this also allowed communities to buy land for recreational use, but you couldn't use the money to update, repair, or maintain existing playgrounds or playgrounds. But there's been an amendment within the last, can you explain what? The amendment did something, now you can.
Sure, I'll explain that, I'll agree. Yes, you can use CPA funds to acquire open space, and you can use CPA funds to acquire land for recreational purposes, a ball field. There's one exception in the statute, you can't do a stadium, only you can use artificial turf. Legislators put those two specific exemptions in, but it's otherwise very broadly defined. Before 2012, you could only use CPA funds to create, acquire, or create a new playground or ball field or trail. Now you can actually use the funds to improve an existing ball field or trail. So you can put in creatures, grass, lighting.
Drainage?
Drainage, anything under the rep for that 10% that has to be used for recreation. Some communities like to pass CPA only for recreation. They want more soccer fields, they need lights, they want their kids to be safe outside, and they want to have nice places for their kids to go and play. And there are a lot of communities that are spending 80% of their funds. And there are a lot of communities that are spending eighty percent of their funds restoring and improving their rec fields, their ball fields and the land. There are other communities, just so you know, like the city Cambridge, that are using eighty percent on housing. And it's really up to your community. It can change year to year. You can save up for a big project. It's really up to you.
Thank you.
That's true. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Finance committee, thank you very much.
I'm happy to come back. You just have to call, that's my job. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Is everybody okay with everything right now? Sorry. No problem, sorry. Next article, live petition having to do with New Day.
Hi. Hi, my name is Julia Gia and I'm the CEO of Health Imperatives, which is an organization that survives human services to about twenty-seven thousand people in southeastern Mass. Our New Day program is very generously supported by the town and I want to thank you very much. We are the only provider of sexual assault services in Fleming County. And we also, I talked last year about reorganizing our programs for sexual assault and domestic violence under one program area called Violence Intervention is Prevention, so we can provide more coordinated services. So, in addition to providing emergency assistance when someone's assaulted at the hospital, hotline, one-on-one counseling, help with any kind of basic need. We also are in the Brockton District Court, helping people restrain orders and harassing orders. We also operate an emergency domestic violence shelter. In the last ten years, just the beginning of our fiscal year, July first until the beginning of May, we assisted forty-six Abington residents, fifteen through our New Day Sexual Assault Program and thirty-one with restraining orders. And this is a significant increase from last year where we only served ten residents a year. So, we weren't really tracking our restraining orders anymore, but even on the sexual assault, it's already been increased by fifty percent. So, we're doing everything we can. Funding has been cut last year and again this year, but we're really trying to get out into the communities and become more known so that we can provide the best services to all the communities in our region, from the county of the Noah's Large and also of Clough Brady Quincy. So, we're really very, very appreciative of any support that the town can give to allow us to continue to serve.
Thank you. Any questions for Julia? No, it's a lot of public safety, police fire they know when they're in a situation they know right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
Is, is there some sort of matching grant or anything? If the town provides five thousand dollars, is there any grant program that would match it or anything like that?
Well, we raise, we, we raise funds, for the most part, our number, the number one program that we have the biggest need for is the sexual assault counseling. So, we're constantly, there's no formal match, but we probably raise about fifty thousand dollars a year for that and another hundred thousand for all violence intervention and prevention.
I was just hoping there was some program set up where if a town does five thousand, the state will do five or something.
The state pays a certain, the state funds the majority of the sexual assault program, it's right around a million dollars for the whole county. Some of the money comes through the federal government and that's been cut over time. The state legislature has just recommended slight increases in a number of programs, including Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner, which are the nurses in the hospitals who know how to do all the evidence collection. But overall, the problem is while the cuts have happened in the last few years, the people have been talking more about sexual assault and the good news is that the, the numbers that these people disclose in have gone way up. That's because it's out in the public. But then when people disclose, that's when our numbers come up. And we want to always be able to serve anyone. And we're really trying to do a lot of prevention in schools as well. And we work with survivors of childhood sexual abuse. So, it's very, you know, all the things you've seen in the news lately in this area, in schools, we've been involved in. So, we really are trying to, you know, this is for the public, how do we provide the services? But we can't really spread ourselves too thin and give it all the need, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
My card is in there if anyone has any questions or.
Yes.
Is that in your budget pages yet? A budget line item? Some years ago, we had it in a budget line item. And then it, I think it may come out back into a warrant article. So, I was just trying to figure out if we had it in.
Because the petition articles were coming anyway. So, to have it as a petition article that you have to put on the warrant, the selectmen have to put on it, it means certain criteria. And to have it in the budget, it was just creating a little too much confusion in a lot of, a lot of towns, actually. So, so just relying upon the petition process has clarified that.
Thank you.
Wendy, oh, I see the fire chief sitting there. Is there anything, do you want, you want any questions you have from us, finance committee?
Any questions that we had for the fire chief or anybody else?
I'll say that I'm getting before we go to Wendy, that's what I guess I want to ask.
Is that article in the mood? There was a, the antenna article?
That's what we sent in.
Okay. Yes, Wendy, you're up.
Everybody. I have a question I have to ask you all. I'm getting yours actually from Whitman, so this is just going to be an example of the items that I'm going to try to hand out if they do have a town meeting. Another thing I've never done before. I haven't realized on the. If you don't mind, thank you, I appreciate that. Just beautiful. Thanks. I've been at the last few months. Thank you. So, what we have in front of you is, well, at your own rate, trying to do a petition of a common core in Park. And this has been done in other towns and cities across Mass. It's actually, I'm just starting. So, I know of six other towns that have done either non-binding question on their ballot or the town meeting. They've had, in their nine, are in process of doing it right now. So, really, over the past few months, there's nothing to tell me in doing this. This first flyer is something that I would hand out and will actually print out and try to start giving to people and placing, you know, in different locations and so that people can actually see what we're trying to do. There'd be a map, our town will be on there, our article number, just questions. The next paper is actually from Hanson, the town rep Josh Cutler, but I would try to get something from Jeff Dale because I know the keys behind trying to stop Common Core and Park as well. So, I would have something from him to hand out at the town meeting. The next paper is from a retired teacher, David Zarouf from Whitman. He actually just quit teaching because of Common Core in Park in January. So, this is just a statement from him, from a meeting, a public hearing that was in Pittsburgh in April. There's been other meet, town, like other public hearings. And another one that's coming up in our area is actually on June tenth, it's a public hearing. So, if people want to go and ask questions, the DESC will be there. And then the next paper is just some facts about M-Cas first Park. And then the next one, this is just for your reading for later. The next one is from Tom Verdingham and he is a, he works for the Pirate Institute and they're kind of non-partisan work that spends a lot of time on Common Core and Park. And then the next paper is actually just from Whitman and it just describes things that are going on, a lobbying. And then the next one is just their article that they have. They just passed this last one, they got it, Whitman and Hanson. So, there's four towns, Whitman, Houston, Halifax and Abington. We're all trying to kind of go across and put it together. Dukesbury is also downed in Lake Mills. So, kind of the middle towns trying to put it together right now. And I think it's Halifax is coming up next. I think it's May sixteenth or nineteenth, I forget which. And then Abington would be June eighth. Other towns that are doing it are Halifax, more of both, Wilbraham, Exbridge, Agawar, Ball River and Bedway. Towns that have already done this article are Brookfield, Dukesbury, Hanson, Whitman, Hanson and Brookfield. So, the reason why we want this article placed on the board is the town meeting on Dukesbury, it's a non-binding advisory vote only. It will not replace Common Core or Park, but it will enable the townspeople of Abington to vote and thus take a stand against that or mandates such as Common Core. To put parents, teachers and students back into public education, the purpose of the non-binding advisory vote is to send a message to the Department of Education and our elected officials to let them know that we want to keep public education at the local level and make sure that parents have say in what our children are learning.
Thank you, Wendy. Wendy?
The school committee or the administration's position on this, do you know?
You know, I know that last year.
No, I asked you to, for you to speak for them.
No, I totally understand. I, I, we didn't actually go to this. And we go to them about this is because I noticed from other towns, they were trying to keep the school committee out of it. So, as y'all know, or most of you probably know, I was writing for school committee. I did this before I made the decision to write for school committee. So, I didn't know how that would, you know, how that, everything would pan out with that. But I kind of was just trying to take one step at a time. So, they really don't, I don't think they are, they know what's going on with this. As far as Park, they said no to us using Park for this year in their June, I think it was June meeting last year, because we don't have this technology, definitely want it, it will cost more to do the paper pen test. And just right now, we don't know what the results are going to be. We're not going to, you know, with M-Cas, we find out a year later what the questions were on the test. You're not going to find out what the questions were on Park and it's very private. And it's just a, a lot that we don't know about yet. And my main thing is just not using our kids the same way. So, I have other moms in the audience that are with me here tonight. All right, yes. You know what, I'm the school committee and this, this board.
But I have a town on the list, so I have to tell you something.
Okay.
Town meeting can't take a vote to direct the school committee or the board of selectmen to take some action. Wendy mentioned non-binding resolution. Some towns, some town council would just rule this is out of order and that no vote should be taken because it's improper. Some towns have a history of non-binding resolutions, like Cambridge, would put this on there and people could talk about it, speak about it, take a vote, and whether it passes or not, it doesn't have any legal effect. I just want people, I know Wendy I think knows this, but I want people at home to know this, that this is, I think Wendy's intent is to put this on, it really is a discussion item.
Exactly.
I am not yet sure because I, actually, I wasn't sure if town council was going to be here tonight, but we usually have a meeting in town council before town meeting to go over the legality of all the articles and this is one that I know is on the front burner. So, I'll let you know before town meetings, so there's no surprises, whether we are just going to have to say, sorry, we can't, we're not going to take a vote on this, or we may be able to say it and just, you know, make it clear to people, it's a non-binding resolution. It's, it might make you feel good whether you vote yes or no, but it's really not going to change anything because it's just, and I don't know all the details about Park and M-Cas and all this stuff. It comes from the state and they can tell the school committees what to do. And this may be an issue more that goes before the school committee or goes before the State Board of Education. That's all the input I wanted to give to you tonight. I'm not sure how I want to proceed with this article. So, I just wanted to raise that flag and then get away to my phone.
Okay. Yeah, it's definitely a non-binding vote. So, it's not going to affect anything, but it's better bring attention to the issue because there hasn't been any attention. We, parents aren't aware, teachers weren't aware, like nobody, legislator didn't vote on this. Like there's, there needs to be some action taken and it's coming at the local level. So, that's why all these towns are trying to put it on their, either on their ballot, which I tried to do, but I guess it was too late. So, that's why this was the next, I guess, the course of action that I had to take. So, I bought the signatures and I wasn't aware that, you know, you guys can say your turn, I guess. I just thought that it was, I would present it to you tonight so that you were aware what was going on and then it would just go, they're trying to tell you, but.
I was just going to say, just in, and I, and I know, like, when you write these up, you know, you write them up and you try to be consistent with what other ones do.
Right. That was taken from the first one.
And it's definitely the, I mean, we've gone through this on town meeting before, where ultimately, if it does say it's a non-binding, and I noticed yours doesn't, where this one from Whitman does.
Right, I just.
So, ultimately, if it is allowed, it ends up being at like a sense of the meeting. It's like, it's like, let's, let's, let's take the sense of those who are here at town meeting, how do we feel as a town about this issue? Even though it may, I mean, Sean's going to want to tell you this and, but it, it, sometimes those still have very much value because it does kind of give the sense of how do we feel as a town, even though we can't direct, we are, we're not going to do that. So, sometimes it still has significant value.
And that's what we're hoping for.
If I might, I have a buddy who's sitting on the average school committee for a number of years and I do know that they have a position that all boards and questions should have with their side, especially the school committee, they have, well, it's unfortunate. You bring forth a very good point, but a lot of people who go to town meeting, I know the older people, for them to understand this, I will fall on you to go into a warrant presentation, they're going to vote for you guys.
Well, I'm hoping you're not going to, so I.
Well, no, I, I guess the point I'd like to make is there any, would you be willing to go to the school committee? If no one of us is non-binding, ask for their blessings to put it on as a non-binding.
I'm sure they would love that for me.
Well, no, no, I mean, I seriously mean that.
No, I'm serious. Like, I, I would do anything.
I mean, I appreciate it. I think it would probably help the members of the finance committee making a decision.
Right, well, this all doesn't affect anything. This.
No, no, I listen. But it's just a kind of, when you kind of feel like we're stepping on their toes a little bit or just, you know, around the thing, but the townspeople, the taxpayers, they have the best interest of the kids and stuff. And I'm not saying that they say no to you, that we'd say no.
Right.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, to me personally, I haven't sat on that board for years, like, a little bit, you're serving their authority and something.
I'm not trying to, I'm trying to keep them out of it so that we don't have to make any decision.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, that's just what other towns.
They might if they make a decision.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Just one statement, I guess, and this is anybody that's served on the finance committee and the members, you're the very last article of the night. At, at nine o'clock at night, especially if we had to wait for court, people are not going to want to, unfortunately for you, people are not going to want to debate this. So, it kind of, actually, frankly, it's going to suck for you because people want to go home at that point. So, you know, they're not really going to, you're not going to get, you're not going to get the fair debate that, that you would, you were not going to get the give and take. A lot of people are going to leave by that point. So, I'm just giving you the fair warning that this is not going to be a good forum. I have no problem with going over the article and making a recommendation if that's what the board wants to do, but just to give you a full warning, a warning you ahead of time, it's not going to be pretty that night. So, it would be, you know.
I feel like there, I guess our kids and our schools, it's not that important to how people are going to need to make.
Well, no, that's not, that's not the point I'm trying to make. I'm trying to make that, you know, on a Monday night, we all know what the end of town meeting is like, that's all.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am. Could you use the microphone, please? Just so people, believe it or not, some people actually watch this. You don't see after midnight, but it, it sleeps over there on the.
I'm Melissa Manley, I'm on Washington Street. I just, I just wanted to say, like, I think Wendy's going with the precedent that a lot of other towns have done and if we can put it on as a non-binding article, then at least people will maybe know. I don't know, I'm sure everybody is on Facebook and you constantly hear about all the, the math that people are dealing with now and parents who can't help their children with homework and teachers who don't want to teach anymore because of all the testing and the data collection and it. the testing and the data collection, and it is taking away from education. And in just like the past few years of me being involved in the educational system, it's taken away from teaching. And I think that this is just important, and has been done in other towns, to bring it forth so that people know this is something we should have a say in as parents and as a community, because it's our kids' education, and the state shouldn't be the ones telling us, I mean, the federal government shouldn't be the ones telling us what we should be teaching our kids. You know, Massachusetts already had a great educational system, and now they're trying to change it, and our kids aren't necessarily going to be getting what they deserve.
You know, Wendy, and I, I spoke to Mr. Buck, he's passionate for CPA, I think you're equal on having one of those, right? This is a suggestion, maybe to get the word out there, if you do a cable show, where you answer some of these questions, and you can do that, you can, you know, hire your own cable show, and you'll be put on a local community. And I, I think you'd be pleasantly surprised over how many people really look at that and try to gather information, it's just a suggestion.
That's a great idea to do, if you're going to town, yeah.
Well, I would, I'm open to anything. I would just be very sad to not see this, because this would be the only town that has, has been noted.
And as you say, the people don't care, it's very complex, it's very complex. And, you know, I think that's the issue more than it's anything, people don't understand. So, if you can help that along and bring it, I think, I think the point that you make, that the federal government is starting to dictate to us what we should be teaching our kids, I, you know, but again, I'm not, I'm going off what I said, we're here to ask questions, so I follow this, but, yeah. Go again. Yes.
Kind of some of the things that I would have said, the educating, educating the public more, I think, before, before they see it at town meeting would be your best bet. But also, moving forward, as you get into that, just a suggestion I wanted to throw out, because I know that, we've done this with other things, where it's, it's come before us, for other things, where you ask, where you have a warrant, a petition, to ask certain, whether it be selectmen or the school committee, or if you as a town as a whole, you know, after you've gone through educating people, so they know whether this is something that they, okay with or not, you can then also ask for, we draft a letter to the, this is the selectmen, that, so that your community is heard as a whole, so for the whole town.
Yeah, I know that that's our view, was, was like, Wendy, understanding your concerns, but I think it's more a school committee issue, and that's my relaxed.
Right, that's what I'm saying, like, it would be something that you could petition the school committee to, if they felt a certain way about it that you do, you can petition the school committee to send a letter to the state or federal officials that are-
Right, but what worried me, as last year when we came, is that the school committee wasn't aware, really, of what part was, but yet they were ready to vote on it. So I don't, I'm not, like, what is their meeting, the end of May, and then this is June 10th, you know, I don't know how much time that's going to allow. So, I mean, I would go to them, I don't know if they can have a special meeting, I'm not sure, you know, cable show next week, but I'd really like to see this. I mean, like I said, every other town has done it, and has put it, their selectmen have put it on their, their town, for the town meeting, or on their ballot.
Yeah, I would have no problem with it if this article gets brought up at town meeting, and the town meeting votes to vote yes, and to, you know, show that they do not, they do not like this, that, come back to the board of selectmen, and I, as a member of the board of selectmen, would have no problem sending a letter to our legislators and saying, our town meeting, this is what our town meeting wants, and then have no problem sending it.
Right, and I, I've spoken to Jeff Dale, he's going to be at town meeting, and I know he's pretty much behind me on most of these issues as well. We've spoken at length before. There's also, I don't know if I gave it to you, I think I did, even right now, the legislator has some House bills, so you can see what those are about.
I just quickly wanted to mention, last year, there was a forum, and originally, it seemed like a lot of the communities were talking about how they thought school committee would be the place where this decision would be made, but I think that people realized that the best approach was to take this legal approach that, because there are so many different reasons not wanted, but that the legal approach might be the best one, to say that, you know, it needs to be under local control, and that the federal government didn't necessarily get our permission to do this. And so, the school committee, like theoretically, it sounds like you would think they would have the place to make this decision, but these other communities have decided that this seemed to be the best approach, and so they've decided this will be our best approach to try to make a difference. So, I just wanted to mention that. So we, early on, I know last year I went to one of the forums to learn about common court, because I didn't know anything about it, and at that meeting, people kept saying, well, shouldn't this be up to the school committees to decide? But the school committees, or even the superintendent, have told me people's pleas that they're not really at, in a position to make that decision, or they didn't have the information that they needed, or they're worried about the promise of technology, which is kind of like tied into this. So it seems like this is really the best method to get people to hear about it.
Thank you. Any other questions? And I'm sure that the school committee has their reasons for what, they just, you know, I go, if I need to bring them up, but I mean, again, I'm a little bit, but I just support, I'd like to, I'd like to say the legislative branch, I think that this is right.
So, but the best way to do that, though, is through a town vote.
That's fine.
Well, you know, I mean, that's, in our opinion, the moms, our soccer moms, we're called now.
Is there any way to get it moved up on the schedule?
That's up to the moderator, but typically-
Oh, hey! Let me get this back to you.
When I was moderator, if somebody wanted to bring up an article, I would speak against it, okay, because I didn't think it was fear of special interests to bring up an article and then get what they want to leave, so.
But in this case, where it's not really a non-binding vote, it might be.
It's up to the moderator.
No, I think the bylaw says, I believe you need a, I want to say a four-fifths vote of those present to move something out of, out of order. So, we, we can talk before town meeting, if you think that's something you want to request, I'll, I'll tell you what you can do, I can't promise you what people will vote, but I'll be happy to help you with procedural stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Let me just ask you a question, we, we have some stuff that we're going to go over, we don't have to go over it, and we could be out of here in another 10 minutes, if we want to re-engage in the session. Would you be willing, would you like to do that? This is all we have. Okay, that's fine. We'll, 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 that's fine. Well, that's fine. It's too, too worried, just make a motion.
Are we, are we discussing any other articles, though, Mr. Jim?
I don't have any reason to discuss it.
Weren't we, weren't we going to ask the water to be here, because we have a lot of questions on their articles, the wording was all messed up.
We were, but I don't think we have any water.
We're going to continue.
Ian, did you have, did you have a question?
I'm here because, I have an article.
Yes, Mr. Chairman Leo was here to speak to Article 15, and, and the Warren 2, which is a little, it's a long article, but not easy to deal with, you might think, but.
Okay, so, you want to, you don't want, don't have to.
Great, you want me to read it, or?
No, I just, I just see you sitting up there, and I know-
Which article was it?
Our great supporter and fan is going to be alive in person, it's just-
Article 15.
What's that?
I have a great supporter and a fan.
But you say yes or no.
You're all set.
It's all right.
You're good.
All right, same here.
What's the other thing?
Article 15.
So we're not going to address our BS.
Do you want to address articles, or that's fine, but I didn't want to take any votes to the last meeting. You want it?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Article 15, 15, 15.
You like that now, too?
Okay, yep, right, no papers.
We're back to two.
Is it two?
So, to be asked to address it, it's an increase in the town clerk salary line item, and it's to me.
Question for Leo.
When was the last time that that line item, that salary was increased?
Last year. It doesn't speak at all to anything else in my office, it's because of my decision, because I'm elected, it has to be done this way.
That's, I didn't mean to make you worry.
No, it's quite awkward, actually, so I'm hoping everyone's seen it.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Oh, Leo.
Basically, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the articles that I've put forth. Someone mentioned Article 15, that's in the annual town meeting, and that is executing, asking that the taxpayers to approve the execution of a deed in lieu of foreclosure. It's on four remaining parcels of Pohoreki property off of Chestnut Street, on both the north side and the south side. And we've been basically working on those since about 2008. There's a trustee executor because of the death of Mr. Pohoreki back in 2007, 2008. And these are four parcels that he has, the executor has not been able to find a buyer for, and of course, he's got to sell them for more than the taxes due, you know, and there's, there's just no one out there that's interested in these parcels. So the alternative to not going about it this way is that they would continue to stay on the tax rolls, we would allocate more tax dollars to them that we'll never, ever collect, and we would have to spend money to legally go through the land court system to take over these parcels. So I've, I've talked with the executor, he is willing, able, and has in fact executed a deed, turning over the parcels to us, but that requires town meeting vote. That's, that's-
Your recommendation would be?
My recommendation is absolutely to take, to take these parcels, very strong.
Thank you. Question, sir. Solo, right?
Maybe I'm the only one who doesn't know this, where approximately is this property?
I'm glad you asked that.
Continue back there.
Probably, I don't know. I'll be the only one to say I don't know.
No, that was a question that I would answer.
No, I said it was awkward.
Just ask Ron if you would.
There's your question. Oh, I asked where, where approximately it's located, these guys had asked, but no one seems to know, so.
These parcels are both on the north and south side of Chestnut Street.
Not no one, can't be known.
Just up the corner from the intersection of Hancock Street. What I'm passing around is a, an assessor's map, and I've colored in yellow the parcels that we are talking about.
Do you want kids?
To date, the, the executor has probably sold off maybe eight to 10 parcels already, but those are parcels that had value, some homes were built on those, some others, one of the local homeowners wanted for just extra land around the pond, so forth and so on. So we've actually resolved quite a few, but these are four that, you know, he has come to the resolve that he's not going to be able to sell these. And so this is just a very efficient and effective way of taking, taking them under control of the town, getting them off of the tax rolls, and the matter will be ended.
If, if the town takes control of the land, we own the land?
We own the land.
And then we could declare it surplus land and try to sell it at some point, or not sell it?
Well, you have to remember, it's being taken through tax title, so the only way that you can, I mean, the land, the, the town can vote to use it for its own purpose, you know, cultural, so forth and so on, but if it were to be sold, it would have to be sold at auction, as a tax title possession. Yes, I know.
How many acres there is on?
Um, it is quite a few acres. The parcel on the far north side, it's kind of landlocked, up there on the Holbrook Line, is 14.7 acres. There's another one on that side of the street that is 5.5 acres. There's one on the south side, the largest one, is 45 acres, and then there's a little lot that actually has frontage on Chestnut Street, that's 1.46 acres. So it's quite a bit of land.
Good, good. We're going to mow it.
Can I ask how much?
Absolutely.
How much is taxes over there?
Okay.
Sorry. Thought it was new.
It is, I'm going to pass out something, so you'll have-
$13,898. You were prepared. Sure. Want the same page?
Yes.
Just want the same page.
When you see this, you're going to be somewhat shocked, because it's a very large amount of money. Bear in mind that this includes, the, the tax title amount is a combination of original taxes, accrued interest at the time it went into tax title, and then 16% earnings on top of that while in tax title. In addition to, because this was all chapter land at one point, after his death, and no one to annually file to maintain the chapter land, this also includes what's called a five-year rollback. And that's a full and fair value of taxation, looking back for the past five years on, on the value of the property. So that immediately adds a substantial amount of money to the, to the amount due. Well, keep, keep in mind, as I say, they have sold off about eight to 10 lots. I was going to put together those numbers, but I didn't have time for tonight. We've collected hundreds of thousands of dollars on the lots that have been sold.
You just covered, so the lots that the property has been sold has gone towards extending that?
Only on the lot that was sold. I can't, I can't force them to take proceeds from one lot and apply it against taxes on another lot. I can't force anyone to do that.
Thank you, Leo.
Any other questions?
Every lot is treated individually.
Even though they have the money coming in from the estate?
Well, who knows how much money they really made? They paid a good amount of it over to us, there's an executor administrator involved in this who, who needs to be paid, and there's land survey people that went out and did a lot of work to, to prepare these, these lots for sale. I would, I would guess that they haven't made a tremendous amount of money on the liquidation of, of these parcels. But I still cannot force anyone to take their sales proceeds from this parcel and apply them to taxes on that parcel. Yes, they are, yeah. I mean, you know, unless you want to go to court and bring a judge and try to sue the estate for payment of taxes, but again, that's all very expensive and not necessarily worth it.
This map was very useful, though, because now I know where Old Whacket Road was-
Yes, yeah, that was important.
I didn't know where it was.
Was that, was Old Whacket, or Whacket Road?
It's not a real street, right?
It's a, it's a, it's a paper street.
Did they own, were they the owners of that, dude?
No, there's a, someone else that owns, well, some of their property may have boughted a portion of it, but there's a couple other very large landowners up there who are closer to and encompass more of Old Whacket lane.
Just that one, is that?
Uh, they, yeah, they own some of that, near Old Whacket, yes, but there's another, it may even be an estate, but their taxes are paid.
Is there a new Whacket Road?
Not sure.
Sorry.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Do you have any other articles, too?
Well, there's, we rescind, there's a lot of rescinding articles, so that's simply straightforward, that is to clean up our authorized unissued debt report as we come into 6/30. The reason that they're on the special is, you know, if they are voted favorably upon, then we can immediately correct our records for a 6/30 close, which is one of the measuring points that will be used when we have to prepare an official statement for our bonding for the school, and so we're trying to clean that up as much as possible. And many of the committees, sewer, water department, have been very cooperative, looking very hard at that, and, you know, voting to, at this time, rescind that debt because it won't be used for the purpose it was originally intended for.
Now, when, like in Article 2, when you vote to rescind, you're voting to rescind the debt, but some of it was used.
Yes, we're only voting to rescind what's called authorized but unissued debt. And in that Item 2 article, if you recall, that was, I think, the feasibility study-
Correct.
-of which the MSBA paid for half of that. We have to put the article forward for the complete debt of $800,000, but we were never intending to spend that much, we were only going to spend less than 50 percent. So, that's really removing the portion that was covered by the MSBA.
All set? Thank you, Leo.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'll just launch as I can, approve all of the people who've asked for approval in seven minutes.
Mr. Chairman, just to point out something, I believe it was the finance committee that asked for comparison of the existing limits for the revolving funds, we've got the revolving fund article, it's posted every year, so that is the form you see here. So, the town accountant has worked with all of the departments and elected committees to get more historically realistic limits, most of them have come down, not actually gone up, so I just want to point out the data information that was asked for is distributed.
When that number changes, does that affect our budget overall? It gives us... No, it doesn't. Okay.
Not at all. One other question, the departments that are impacted by their revolving account limit going down, are they all aware of it?
They've all been, yes, they are all aware of it, correct.
We did have some questions with water, actually, I thought, I don't know if they invited them on. I mean, I, I don't know what she wants to be, I don't know, we need to discuss that. Water, and then he came in to discuss his project.
He did.
Well, time to you guys, we can certainly put on next again.
Well, if they've met with the finance committee, I generally defer to the finance committee's recommendations anyways, so I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Well, and that's not tax money anyway.
Right, it's their own revenue.
It's their own.
Yeah, it is. You had some questions, I just thought...
Mostly wording in the articles that was...
You know, that's true.
Okay, so, go back to approval, the April 27, 2015 open session, that's a second motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Maureen.
Second.
Second invite. Vaughn Dever. unanimous? Yes, yes. Discussion on revisions or applications for boards and committees. Mr. Burby has sent in some recommended changes, I don't know if the board's had, I don't want to discuss it tonight, that's what I don't want to say, but I'd like to be able to discuss it and make motions to change or approve at the next meeting. And Alex has asked to have a discussion on the board's selection of the policy, and Alex, if I'm correct, you also would like to...
Continue.
At the next meeting. So, that's, so those two items, we can, we'll be ready to revoke them at the next meeting.
Do we have Andy's recommendation?
They were emailed?
They were emailed just today, so we haven't distributed it.
These are the forms, right?
Those are the forms, yeah.
But the policies, for the board of selectmen's policies and procedures, he did provide some input, in fact, there's some overlap with other policies of the board where there's some inconsistencies.
If you don't get them, you know...
I will distribute them, I think in the interest of, I think, obviously Andy's, wouldn't want to do anything that would constitute a, let someone complain of deliberation, so he probably only sent them like to you, me, and Dory, so...
You know, I didn't even look.
Just today, so we'll get them.
Okay, make sure that, I mean, our policy would cover us just to make those revisions at the next meeting, and just want everybody to be aware of that. Okay, so that brings us to vote for the...
Sasha Botek? You took my turn.
Vote for no action. Sasha Botek, just to have a... Vote for no actions, Sasha Botek's amended 2015 budget.
There's a letter included in the package from April 16.
Vic, do you have a next question?
They are, all they're doing is they're expending from their excess and deficiency fund an amount to do some capital upgrade, it's not going to have any impact on any of the town's contributions, but it will ultimately alter their bottom line budget, but the bottom line budget is going to be enhanced from their excess deficiency fund. So, all they need is the communities to essentially recognize it and vote to...
No action.
Well, no action, right, so...
So, we take a vote?
That's all they seek of you.
Accept the motion, vote for no action, Sasha Botek amended 2015 budget.
Don't make that motion, because it does not increase town assessments.
Okay, motion, right, Mr. Cora?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
It's actually a question to the finance committee, have you guys approved their budget line item, Sasha Botek? Okay, just checking.
Yeah, this is for the current fiscal year, though, by the way.
Close to the current, okay.
Yes, I'll do it. I have a motion by Mr. Cora. Second by Mr. Zansen, improve the comment. Vaughn Dever.
Aye.
Is that unanimous?
Just, I'm not on that. Last phrase, by voting to take no action as soon as possible allows the district to move forward with the bid purchase in the summer rather than later in the fall for their new board, that's the reason for that. Vote. Thank you.
Other comments? No? If you've got anything else that you want to add?
Oh, sorry.
I'm just wondering, has anyone applied for the positions for the volunteer boards? Any more come in since our last meeting?
There hasn't been any since the last meeting.
There hasn't been a...
Yeah, and they're up on the website, right? Openings, positions are going to be filled, okay. My question is, are we going to have a timetable as to when our recommendations, the finance committee recommendations for the, not only the articles but the budget, we have any idea of how it's going to work, how we have a plan, do we want to put a plan together? I guess, Chad, do you, I mean, do you have a date set for your votes, or...
We just started talking about, last week, we're going to go, hopefully next week, go through the final motions. I'd like to meet twice next week, we haven't had to vote this on Tuesday, Wednesday, potentially wrap it up next week.
All right, so maybe not next week, the week after we'll be able to vote?
Right, well, next week, next week, I, well, the only, obviously, it's neither the board of selectmen or the finance committee has to agree with the town manager's budget, but the only change from what you've seen recently to a final recommendation is going to be, once we have absolute bottom line, solid waste contract numbers, so, so other than that, everything else, from what you've seen from me, isn't going to change in terms of a recommendation, but, you know, what your timetable is for dealing with that, again, be as early as next week, I don't know what that, what you have in mind.
Please, no, we should have after that.
But as far as the selectmen, to the extent that the board's recommendation is in place, that we can, I mean, if you'd like to look to do, we have that on our agenda Monday, that could be helpful.
I think we had said that if we were posting somewhere around 28.
We have to have the information up at 28.
I may have counted, reminding, the finance committee has to have their recommendations, 10 business days, 10 calendar days.
All right, so we meet next Monday night, and if there's anything, you can, Mr. Vaughn, put on your tent, oh, take care of that, and other than that, I don't have anything else, you guys.
Can I mention one thing, Mike?
No.
Can I, I don't, and I apologize if this has already mentioned, but town meeting is on June 8th, Monday, June 8th, 7 o'clock at the high school. If for some reason we don't finish the articles, we would continue town meeting to the following Monday, June 15th at Haven High, so I would hope we get everything done in one night, but that really determine, is going to be determinate as to how quickly we can get 150 registered voters in there so we can start the meeting, so I'd ask everyone to arrive 15 minutes early, help us get started quickly at 7 o'clock, and we'll try to get everything done in a timely manner in one night. Thanks.
Mr. Maureen.
Schedule for appointments for the school committees, I mean, to schedule that?
We're going to have water commission, I understand, two of the school committee now?
Yes.
So, yeah, we're going to have to fill, I said, Parkinack, did they all set? They had a write-in, I think the Veterans Memorial Trust.
I think it's just those three.
It's those three, yeah.
We'll have to coordinate with the chairman, I know the, I'm presuming that the selectmen and the school committee would only want them to have to meet once to fill those two positions jointly, but the timing of the fact that one resignation just came in today would dictate that you need to meet your charter requirements for posting that, too. So, we can look at the calendar and make suggestions to Mike as to what the best...
Yeah, there's a timeframe, once we receive those, they have to be posted, there's only days we must receive, and we have a fixed amount of time before we have to fill them, our vote back, it has to be posted all over.
Right, because we talked about that, and we thought if we posted it like next Monday, the 18th, the timing would work for a board of selectmen meeting on the 8th or the 15th, either or, so that's our plan.
So, either at...
Yeah, we could do it before town meeting jointly, and, yeah, that's the plan.
So, the people in TV Land know that there's going to be two openings on the school committee and one on the water, as a water commissioner.
Right, it was actually open, opened on all of them.
Yes, but those are the elective ones that have to be filled.
So, anything further, I want to thank the members of the finance committee, I hope that helped out a little bit, I think it was a pretty good discussion, I thought, me to learn something, had to be a good night. Anything further? Do we have public comment?
Thank you.
Accept the motion, properly to her.
Motion to adjourn?
I guess I'll say...
Please, to adjourn.
She's already got the mic ready.